You ready? Good evening. Before I call this meeting to order, hello, good evening. Before I call this meeting to order, there is a car, a Honda CR-V, license plate CX54008. Benjamin Cosman, your car is parked in the police parking spot. You may want to move it before it gets towed. Okay, I will call this meeting of the city, of the Urbana City Council Committee of the whole meeting to order, March 4th at 7:00 PM. Will the clerk call the row?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colasetti. Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of December 11th and December 18th.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Allison, seconded by Grace. Approval of minutes from December 11th and December 18th of 2023. Are those, are there any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Any additions to the agenda? None? Okay. The next item is presentations and public input. We'll begin with a presentation from the United Way of Champaign County. They will be presenting the Asset Limited Income Constrained Employment, or ALIS, households. Welcome.
Thank you, members of the council. It's very nice to be here tonight. My name is Sue Gray, and I'm president and CEO of United Way of Champaign County. And with me is my colleague, our Chief Impact Officer, Beverly Baker. And tonight, we're going to share with you information about ALIS. Our struggling, working families here in Champaign County, and what the impact is here specifically in Urbana. So Bev is going to start us off, and then we'll tag team, and she'll take, I'll take after her.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us this evening. So first of all, just to give you a brief background. ALIS, Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed, has come to fruition from starting out east with the state of New Jersey, and in particular, their United Way of Northern New Jersey. Worked with Rutgers University to study more deeply about what they were then calling the working poor in their community. That work has literally spread across the country, and the ALIS sustainability is now used in about 25 different states to learn more about people in the state and in various communities. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about that. It started out as grassroots, has become very, very formalized, and the methodology behind the report is absolutely amazing. So this report, tonight, we will give you just the briefest of overview of information. It is so much more in-depth than what we'll be able to provide tonight. So we strongly encourage you, anyone watching or in the audience, to visit United for ALIS, and you can explore all about the state of Illinois. You can break down by county, by city, by township, et cetera. So again, we're just going to be scratching the surface. So here's a little bit of information. ALIS, already explained, stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. In other words, it's our neighbors hidden in plain sight. These families earn just above the federal poverty level, but not enough to afford all the basics. They are priced out of essentials in the communities where they live, and are forced to make impossible choices daily in an attempt to make ends meet. And they have no savings to fall back on for emergencies, or to put away for investments like education, homeownership, or retirement. ALIS spans all races, all ethnicities, ages, and genders in communities nationwide. ALIS workers are our childcare providers, our retail salespeople, our cashiers, our waiters, our delivery drivers, and our caregivers. We all know ALIS, and we rely on ALIS each and every day. So when ALIS can't pay the bills, we all pay the price. So a little bit about Champaign County, and then in a minute, I'll give you some more specifics around Urbana. Here in Champaign County, 44% of our households struggle financially. In Champaign County, there are eighty, a little over 84,000 households, and 44% of those households earn less than the ALIS threshold. So you'll hear us reference the ALIS threshold. And what that is, is we all have heard about the federal poverty level, right? So we know when individuals are living in poverty, that's here. What the ALIS threshold is, is that space where people are earning more than that federal poverty level, but not enough to be truly self-sufficient, to be able to meet all of their expenses, be ready and stable for that rainy day, that unexpected car repair, the health issue, whatever. So that's the ALIS threshold. When you hit that and above, you're stable, right? You're self-sufficient. So ALIS is that gap between the federal poverty level and not quite self-sufficient yet. So 44% of households in Champaign County are considered ALIS. They're either ALIS or below ALIS and in the federal poverty level. So here in Champaign County, 17% or around 14,000 of all households were in poverty, and another 23,000 or 27% were ALIS households. In other words, these 23,000 households are earning more than that federal poverty level, but not enough to be truly self-sufficient. So let's take it to Urbana specifically. And we're going to look a little bit more at the township level data, because it really allows us to drill down the data a little bit more tangibly. There are just a little more than 16,000 households in this area, and about 60% of those households earn less than the ALIS threshold. Of those, 27% or a little over 4,000 households are in poverty, and another 33% or a little over 5,000 are ALIS. Looking at the township level data across all of Champaign County, the city of Urbana's Cunningham Township has the highest percentage of households earning below the ALIS threshold. So just to give you some comparison, Cunningham Township in Urbana is at 60%. Urbana Township is at 46%. City of Champaign Township is at 48%. Champaign Township is at 25%, and Rantoul Township is at 55%. So that's just some comparison about some of the other townships that I know you work with, and that hold our population hubs here for our area. So here's a little bit more about ALIS. ALIS households exist across all ages, genders, races, ethnicities, and geographies. Yet we know that some groups are more likely to be ALIS than others as a result because of barriers to education, homeownership, healthcare, financial wealth, and savings, among others. The groups most likely to earn less than the ALIS threshold are households headed by people under age 25, single female-headed households, and black households. The groups least likely to be ALIS are households where they are married with children, white, or between the ages of 45 and 64 years of age. So next, I'm going to share with you, and I know this is hard to see for the folks in the audience, but what we have here is the survival budget. And again, this can be found at that United for ALIS website. The household survival budget accurately reflects the minimum cost to live and work in our modern economy. This budget is the basis for determining whether households are above or below that ALIS threshold. It's localized to our area with the costs in our community. These budgets include housing, childcare, food, transportation, healthcare, and technology such as a smartphone plan, plus taxes and a 10% miscellaneous category. For a family with two kids in school and two adults, the household survival budget was a little over $62,000 in 2021 for Champaign County. Now again, I should note that the data that I just shared is all from 2021. You know that data is not always in real time. It takes, there's always a lag. So the most recent complete data we have is from 2021. And again, we know if you've been to the grocery store lately, things have changed a little bit in the past few years. So Sue?
All right, next up, we're going to talk about the newest part of the research that's being done with Rutgers University and the United Way of Northern New Jersey. And they just established this Economic Viability Dashboard. And so this really focuses in on work, housing, community, and even have a section on gaps. But in the center of everything is ALIS. And so ALIS's financial well-being depends on each of these three domains. If even one is lacking, it throws everything off. And ALIS bears the brunt of it. The actions we take, our policies, our initiatives, our legislation, give ALIS a chance to achieve stability. So top-level findings, this is all around work. And I have to say again, this is really just cursory information for everyone. The best thing you can do is do a deeper dive on the website. And like I said, this is brand new for us too, so we're learning as well. But we're able to zero in on some very pressing socioeconomic needs of our struggling, working households and families. And because of this dashboard, you can really drill down. When we talk about people who are living in hardship, the first major factor that often comes to mind is jobs and wages. And what we found was that work conditions in Champaign County undermined economic health. This map of our state shows the percentage of full-time workers who earn enough to support the household survival budget, or the minimum cost of essentials for one adult and one school-aged child. The darker the shading, the higher the percentage of workers who can meet these expenses, and the better for our communities. And as you can see, Champaign County is represented by a lighter shade. This means Champaign County has a smaller number of workers earning enough.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt for just a moment. Chandra, can we make a motion to extend? Can I, is two minutes enough?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the presentation for two minutes.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Allison, seconded by James. The presentation will extend another two minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, two more minutes.
So in, we're skimming through. So let's go through this really quick. So we look at work. One of the things I'd like to point out is we have a green light when it comes to workers below the ALIS threshold who commute 15 minutes or less to work. That's actually an asset in a community. Where we have gaps are working-age adults below the ALIS threshold, out of labor force, with a child in the household, and workers in jobs that cannot support a household survival budget. So how do we measure up? If we look at our neighbors in McLean County, they have a larger percentage of full-time workers who can meet expenses, 73% in McLean, 60% in Champaign. Significant here, I think, is that Champaign County has a lower percentage of black workers who can meet expenses, 52% in McLean, and 35 in Champaign. So we look at housing, that's another big issue, as we all know here in Champaign County. It's really significant to pay attention to this. Housing is an opportunity for generational wealth, and there's definitely a shortage here in Champaign County. And so you can see though, oh, I'm sorry, Bev. So we do have a green number, the green is good. Homeowners below the ALIS threshold who are not cosburdened with rent, which is wonderful. And I guess the best thing that we can do here, and we'll go all the way to the end, Bev, because there's so much information, is again, direct you to the website, unitedforalice.org. You can visit the Economic Viability Dashboard. You can also look at Illinois, you can select the county, and if you hover over the county, you can get zip codes, you can get townships, and you can really dive deep into this information about what helps and what hurts our struggling, working families here in Champaign County, and in particular, in Urbana.
Thank you. We have a moment for a couple of questions. Are there any from council? Okay, none. Thank you so much, Bev and Sue, we appreciate the information.
Thank you so much for having us.
Okay, next, we'll have public input, and I'll read a few rules before we begin public input. Speakers must address the council, not the audience. We're here to listen. Council members will not engage in debate or answer questions from the audience during public input. Each speaker has the right to speak uninterrupted. Please treat each other with respect. We have a fire marshal monitoring room occupancy, and depending upon the numbers, we may need to cycle people in and out of the room during public input and limit, to limit the number of people to meet and comply with the fire code. The video monitor in the lobby will broadcast the meeting. Our official meeting time ends at 10:30. This may be extended until 11:00 PM by vote of the council. There's a hard stop at 11:00 PM. If an individual's behavior disrupts the meeting and prevents council from conducting the normal course of business, they will be asked to leave the room. They may watch the meeting livestreamed on YouTube and submit comments via email. Okay, with that, if you wish to speak, you will have three minutes.
Guess it's me first.
Yes, and none of that, please, thank you.
My name is Dua Aldesuki, and I have been and spoken at city council just about every meeting, starting on January 8th until now. And as I hope you know by now, I am also a member of the Palestinian diaspora, which means my grandparents were expelled forcibly from Palestinian lands in the Nakba between 1947 and 1949. I have a petition that we have put together that has over 1,300 signatures on it of people that were actually in support of the first ceasefire resolution, and so I wanted to give one to the city clerk to include in the record, and then pass one out to each member, if that's okay? Thank you. I didn't realize I could do that. All right. So I've reached out to each council member individually to share the concerns of the CU Muslim Action Committee regarding the new resolution submitted, and I was able to speak with three of them. The resolution that was submitted to the council on January 8th was thoughtful and nuanced. The one drafted by the mayor and on the agenda for tonight is a poor attempt to silence our concerns. The mayor has chosen to only work with Stab and anyone working with him, which did not include a single Muslim, Arab, or Palestinian voice, and I encourage you to reflect on why that may be. Council has gone from a resolution with massive community support, which includes this petition that I just handed out, with over 1,300 signatures, the fact that we have outnumbered those who opposed the original ceasefire resolution almost two to one at most meetings, the diversity represented by those supporting the original ceasefire resolution, the validity of the arguments proposed, and how we had almost 700 people on the streets of Champaign-Urbana on Saturday demanding a ceasefire. It's incredibly problematic to see this completely disregarded by our mayor and council. I know it's not the easy thing to support Palestinian rights. It has always been the litmus test for politicians. It's not where the funding comes from, but funding is almost never on the side of truth and justice. We came back week after week for a ceasefire resolution, an end to violence now, now, not later, not at an undefined future time. The current resolution presented and on the agenda does not do that. But now, the US is the only reason this aggression continues until now. So let us not be a cog in the US war machine. We want a ceasefire resolution. Thank you. Can I start? Good evening. My name is Shayna Andrews, and I am a student at UIUC. I am also a proud Jew and a very proud Zionist. Today, March 4th, marks exactly 150 days since the deadliest day in Jewish history since the Holocaust. 150 days ago, on October 7th, the lives of hundreds of innocent Jews were taken as they were slaughtered, raped, and kidnapped. Today, 134 innocent men, women, and children remain in Gaza, being held hostage by Hamas. Where are they being held? Hospitals, schools, civilian homes, and in tunnels under civilian communities. Hamas knows that Israel will not attack a hospital or a school as we try to protect the lives of Palestinians as well. Two months ago, I went to Israel on a volunteer trip. I met with a soldier who spent months in Gaza. He showed me a video from his own GoPro while being there. The video showed him and other IDF soldiers entering a home in Gaza to find a nude, disabled elderly Palestinian. The soldiers used their own personal resources to cover the man and to take him out of the house, the house where Hamas left him to die. You see, the difference between Hamas and Israel is that Israel protects their people instead of using them as human shields. We celebrate life, not death. While I was in Israel, I spoke with survivors of the Nova Festival massacre. The Nova Festival was a festival for celebrating love, for celebrating peace, although Hamas brutally slaughtered over 400 innocent people. I also had the opportunity to help a farmer pick oranges as he'd lost all but three of his workers because of Hamas. While working on the fields, I could feel the ground shake beneath me as bombs exploded miles away from me. Yet I still felt safer there than I do here in Urbana. As a freshman here at the university, I was thrilled to be part of a community that was so inclusive, accepting, and safe. However, not one of those things have been true since October 7th. Anti-Semitic acts have skyrocketed in Urbana-Champaign, such as bricks being thrown through Jewish fraternities and Jewish students being called Nazis, genocide supporters, and white supremacists. I no longer feel safe in this community if I can even call it that anymore. I want to remind everyone here that there was a ceasefire on October 6th. In fact, only six days ago, Hamas rejected another ceasefire resolution, as they have many times because they refused to release the hostages. A ceasefire will only provide Hamas with more time to regroup, obtain more weapons, and kill more people. And the humanitarian aid sent to Gaza does not go to civilians, it goes directly to Hamas. They are a terrorist group that does not care for the welfare of their own people or anyone but themselves. The only way to free Palestine is to end Hamas. I urge you all to vote against a ceasefire resolution and create one that releases the hostages immediately and fights for peace. Thank you for your time. I'm Israel Chai!
Hello, members of the council. My name is Lila Leopold. I'm in Ward 4 in Urbana, and I'd like to read a portion of a letter that I submitted on behalf of UC Jews for Ceasefire. And I think we're going to have to do some rotating today, so thank you for facilitating this. And a great strength of our operations as UC Jews for Ceasefire is that our members hold various personal and robust ties with other Jewish, Muslim, and interfaith organizations across the community. And for this reason too, we continue to work to keep our members and our contacts safe. The recent publication of the newly proposed resolution was a great disappointment to me and many of our other members. We believe that it's historically, ethically, and absolutely imperative that the explicit mention of ceasefire be included in the resolution. None of the moving, deeply felt, and so urgently desired goals otherwise mentioned in the new resolution will be possible without a ceasefire. And it's not our position to speculate on the inner workings of the international deals being made right now, but we do have power over what we can do here together in the city council. And including language about ceasefire is indeed truly the bare minimum for inclusion in the resolution in this council. A cessation of funding of US military aid to Israel until there is progress toward a just solution would be just one example of many other points of grave concern. But again, we are simply asking for the word ceasefire. And to directly address the current resolution as it stands, this could take the form of language akin to, but not limited to, the following in a revision of point number two, which I think many people have emailed about this. But what I do, what point I do want to make quickly is that after last week's council meeting, when it seemed that movement towards this new resolution was fast coming, members of UC Jews for Ceasefire did reach out to several of our local contacts, of rabbis, other personal contacts across town. And by the time we reached out to Stab to try to get involved in writing, helping with the language of this new resolution, by the time we did that, the opportunity, it was told, you know, we were told that the opportunity was already closed. And this was in, within a few days after, you know, email was made public last Monday, and then this happened. So we were really trying, we were really trying to step in here and mediate among several different groups who did not have representation. So I just want to reiterate that along with my email, that this needs to have ceasefire, and that was very sneaky.
Can we refrain from yelling and hooping? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sana Sabualla. I'm an Urbana resident and a member of the, and a member of the CU Muslim Action Committee. I'm here to express my support for a real ceasefire resolution. Many of us have been coming to speak in support of a specific ceasefire resolution that we've been asking to get on the agenda for the last eight weeks. You've seen me here before. And as Dua submitted earlier, we have a petition with about 1,300 signatures who also agree with the language and statements made in that original ceasefire resolution.
who also agree with the language and statements made in that original ceasefire resolution. The proposed peace resolution doesn't call for a ceasefire, which is the demand that we've been asking for, week after week. And if you expect us to be satisfied with this resolution, you really haven't been listening to us when we've come here to talk to you, which is really disappointing. I'm quite disturbed that the city council continues to prioritize the feelings of a certain subset of individuals over a really diverse coalition of people who've come together around this issue. And I'm tired of being asked to compromise in the face of blatant US government-funded human rights violations. Every day, we see more and more atrocities coming out. And we're asking the city council stand against this clearly and wholeheartedly. The idea that the word ceasefire is too polarizing is a testament to the level of depravity that we're allowing ourselves to be complicit in now. So I really ask you to consider putting the original ceasefire resolution on the agenda and don't call a statement a ceasefire resolution when it doesn't ask for that at all. Thank you.
My name is Diane Gottile. I don't have a script. I'm here to say that I read the proposal in the news because I was delighted to see it. I think it's an excellent statement, and I hope that the council adopts it. And if I may take a moment to address all the young people in the audience, I hope they pay attention to what the United Way had to say about the needs of our community. And I hope that they direct some of their passion, their concerns, to the people who live among us. As an Urbana resident, this is something I care about deeply. I also care deeply about Israel as a Jew, as a Zionist, and as a supporter since before most of you were born of the two-state solution.
Hi, my name is Stephen McGuire. If we wish to defeat Hamas, we must strengthen Fatah. Yet despite the fact that Hamas does not control the West Bank, it has been subject to aggression by Israeli colonists and the IOF. In fact, despite the fact that Israel agreed not to annex a portion of Zone C, Netanyahu granted the head of the religious Zionist party the position of mayor. By General Stanley McChrystal's insurgent math, for every one innocent death, you create 10 insurgents. So by refusing a ceasefire, we are strengthening Hamas and in doing so, making it impossible to pivot to Asia. By refusing a ceasefire, we have derailed talks with Saudi Arabia and strengthened Iran and Russia in the process. We are doing this to enable Netanyahu so he does not have to withdraw Israeli colonists from the West Bank. And for our efforts, we have destroyed 60% of civil infrastructure and only 20% of Hamas's tunnel networks. So I ask those of you against a ceasefire, which is a necessary part of peace, do you condemn Hamas?
Counsel, as of February 29th, less than a week ago today, Gaza's Health Ministry reported an official death count of 30,035 Palestinians. That was the day 112 Palestinians were killed and 750 were injured in Gaza after Israeli troops opened fire on a crowd receiving aids and supplies such as wheat flour, the massacre now known as the Flower Massacre in Palestine and around the world. Now, more than 800 legal scholars refer to what is happening in Palestine as a genocide. Palestinian people and land are being sieged upon. Now is the time to act. We need to cease fire now. Counsel, I am a constituent urging you to call the resolution a ceasefire resolution, to use the term ceasefire in the resolution, and to, all in all, make this a ceasefire resolution. Because let's face it, I want peace when I'm on the couch reading a book. But what Palestine needs right now is an end to the bullets, the bombs, the internationally illegal white phosphorus that the Israeli military use that burn the skin of the Palestinian people, the murder of Palestinians simply trying to get food to eat. Palestine needs a ceasefire now. And the people of Urbana are asking you, Mayor Marlin, to pass a ceasefire resolution now. 70 cities across the US have passed a ceasefire resolution, Mayor Marlin. It is now Urbana's turn. Free, free Palestine from the river to the sea.
Please to remember to state your name before your comments for the record.
My name is Tanya Yonin. Mayor, city council people, I am here to speak in support of the resolution, calling for the end of the Gaza War and the lasting peace that is included in today's agenda packet. I know that this resolution was drafted by a group of individuals in this community, individuals who have very different views and opinions on the current conflict, but who nevertheless were able to come together and come to an agreement on this particular resolution. I do not personally support every single point in this resolution. I agree with some of it. I disagree with some other points. As I've said before, when I spoke at these meetings previously, I, in the first place, don't think that city government should be in the business of passing international resolutions. This said, I do understand the need of a resolution for this community, and I fully support the resolution currently on the agenda. Because unlike the earlier resolution that was brought in front of the city council on January 8th, the current resolution reflects the views of multiple segments of this community. It is balanced, and it speaks about peace and coexistence values that I hope we all share. I hope the city council will vote in favor of the current resolution on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Bar Asada. I think you all are familiar with me by now. I've been here almost every single week, minus one, for the past eight weeks. And I'm here to speak and ask for a ceasefire resolution. The current proposal that was given does not include a permanent and lasting ceasefire resolution written in it, which goes against what a ceasefire resolution is. Otherwise, it's just a temporary pause. And I'm here to ask the people to think about including that within the peace resolution that was included. But even then, the first resolution that was given was created by diverse people. As you guys know, as I've said before, I'm Palestinian, I'm Muslim, I have family in Gaza. But I wasn't the one who wrote the original proposal. It was a white guy who wrote the original proposal. And we saw, behind him came CU Jews for Ceasefire. And behind him came the director of African Studies here. And many, many people have come across a wide array and a diverse range of people to come and speak in support of it. There was a diverse group of people. There was a coming-together of community in support of this ceasefire resolution. And I'd like for you guys to consider that as you move forward and attempt to address it. Thank you.
My name is George, and I'm here on behalf of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. The Party for Socialism and Liberation is the strongest third party in the area. And in Urbana, where Republicans are few and far between, the choice is between us and the Democrats. On Saturday, we organized a peaceful protest in support of an immediate ceasefire and an end to all US aid for Israel because hard-working American families should not have to bankroll Biden's genocide in Gaza. Over 700 people came out, making this one of the largest demonstrations in local history, directly connected to what we're discussing right now. More and more people in our community, from all backgrounds, are mobilizing to demand an immediate ceasefire. The council's response: refuse to even discuss a resolution if it so much as uses the word ceasefire. Their response has been to try and limit public comment, hide from this conversation, and ignore their constituents. Our response? We're in our communities daily, talking to and organizing with our fellow workers to demand a ceasefire. The sheer disregard this council has for this community speaks volumes. By refusing to pass a proper, popular ceasefire resolution and calling, they are choosing to empower a violent, vocal Zionist minority. Zionist harassment, intimidation, and targeting of those who speak out for peace and justice continues. Most recently, this culminated in a vicious attack by a Zionist armed with a PVC flagpole against a woman half his size who was carrying a medic kit volunteering at our march. She was carrying the medic bag when he choked her with the flagpole. She spent the rest of the night in the emergency room and has a concussion, bruises, and cuts. In this community, by refusing to listen to your constituents, you endanger us. By refusing to listen to Muslims and anti-Zionist Jews, you endanger them. And by refusing to take a clear stand, you're siding with a hateful fringe against a united, diverse majority. And you're doing real, lasting harm. Can't you see that? All because you don't have the spine to oppose a genocide that our money is being wasted on. The council, the mayor, and the Democratic Party seem intent on losing the trust of the people. We demand nothing less than a permanent, immediate ceasefire. Free Palestine!
Itai Sagiv, 410 West Florida Avenue. I am here to speak strongly in support of passing the proposed resolution on the agenda as is.
Can you speak closer to the mic? We're having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, better.
Okay. Itai Sagiv, 410 West Florida Avenue. I am here to speak strongly in support of passing the proposed resolution on the agenda as is, except to offer deputative friendly amendment that a missing indefinite article be placed between "as" and "necessary" in point two. I have spoken in previous meetings against the original resolution proposed by Ben Jocelyn, but expressed an openness to passing a resolution that would be mutually acceptable to both sides. As such, I was one of the people in Stav's group that worked on drafting the proposal to submit to the city. I don't think it is mere vanity on my part to claim that there is much to recommend the text. First, on the substance. I call attention to point five, which calls on the community and its leaders to recognize the pain and perspective of all sides and to seek to unite rather than divide us. This is both an important point. Perhaps you recall that one of my concerns expressed in previous meetings was how the discussion was creating increased polarization and tension in the community and something that is squarely within the remit of the city council. This resolution also avoids denigrating one people or the other and does not attempt to dictate a solution to a very complex problem except for calling for the release of captives from both sides. In so doing, neither side can legitimately claim to be threatened by the resolution itself. Second, on the process. I've heard claims that the Palestinian side was excluded in creating the draft that was submitted to the city council. Nothing could be further from the truth. Stav made public announcements at two separate meetings, asking for volunteers. My understanding is that all who contacted him and responded to emails requesting availability information were included in the meeting. The small group, which included both pro-Israel and pro-Palestinian individuals, worked in good faith for well over an hour and a half to come up with the draft resolution. There is plenty of give and take. We considered five distinct texts, including Ben Jocelyn's original resolution, a portion of which were made into the final draft, sample provided to us by the city, one provided by one of the pro-Palestinian members. He identified it as such during the meeting, and two others of whose provenance is unknown to me. In truth, our final text is somewhere between the city council one and the one proposed by the pro-Palestinian individual. Now, there are portions of this text I am less than thrilled with. I know Stav is disappointed that a couple of the points he wanted to include didn't make it in, but as he told us during the meeting, he decided it was not worth blowing up what we had achieved in order to insist on including something that was not an absolute must-have. I cannot speak for the others, but I would presume they have their own complaints. But such is the nature of political compromise. My sense leaving the meeting was that we were all pleased that we had developed a mutually acceptable text. I urge the city council to weigh the risk of losing that mutual acceptability against any perceived benefit from making significant changes. Thank you.
Counsel, oh, my name is Luke Lee. Resident of Champagne, Urbana. I strongly demand that the council not adopt this resolution. There's no ceasefire in the name, right? It doesn't call for any end of US aid to Israel, right? That's A, hurting residents of Champagne County, right? We just saw that presentation before public comment. 44% of Champagne County households struggle financially. 44%. And in Urbana, that number jumped to 60%. The households struggle financially. The money that's going, the billions of dollars that are going to aid the Israeli genocide could be going to families right here and individuals right here in our community. We need housing. We need schools that are better, you know, fully funded housing, schools. We need true public safety. We need to end hunger in our area. You know, Biden dragged his feet, and Democrats in general dragged their feet on, you know, giving money to our communities when over and over again, that's what the people want for years and years and years, you know, far before 2020, and far, you know, just, it's been decades, if not more. The current resolution doesn't help our community in the county or in the city of Urbana. It doesn't stop Israel systematically destroying homes, which has been happening, systematically destroying Gazans' homes who they're displacing and genociding. It doesn't stop the Israeli occupation forces from posing with Palestinian women's underwear, which has been happening. Palestinian women who they've either killed or displaced. It doesn't stop an internationally recognized mass hunger which is rapidly escalating toward famine. As of this morning, at least 16 children have died of famine. And this number will accelerate rapidly without a ceasefire, right? The Flower Massacre was mentioned earlier. Over 100 people waiting for food, starving people, were massacred by the IOF. And that's only one, and over 700 more were injured. And that's only one of a series of before and after this, of similar massacres, right? It just continues the occupation. There's no call for the end of the occupation. And there's no ceasefire in the ceasefire resolution.
Thank you. You can email the rest of your comments. We'll have the next speaker.
Point of order, the rules on the website say it can be extended to 11:30 in two 30-minute increments. I appreciate moving forward that that is posted on the website. My name is Chris Zelli. The Zionists haven't stuck to one darn agreement since the 49 armistice line, to the 67 annexed territories, to the 95 Oslo Accords, to the darn 2020 Abram Accords. They don't honor anything, and I don't see why they honor this here in the local community. There was no diversity in this new proposal that the drafters pretend they have. And that is disgusting that they pretend they have diversity. We actually have a diverse representation of the community, representing a popular opinion. You would be cowardly and absolutely out of line to not pass it as originally written. If you cannot, I urge you to not pass anything this evening and allow us to continue to work it out in the community so you can better see the popular support that really exists for the ceasefire. On the 7th of October, 695 civilians were killed, as per Zionist sources. Many of these were slain by indiscriminate friendly fire. Those innocents were used to justify killing thousands. In 2022, over just a few months of protests, the IOF killed a third as many civilians as were killed on the 7th, injured twice as many, and took 25 times as many hostages. Child hostages that they detain in solitary confinement without lawyer or trial, deprived of clothes, food, water, adequate shelter, and toilets, beaten and burned in custody. Since the 7th, in exchange for a few hundred lives, Zionists continued the blood feud and erased over 30,000 lives from the face of the earth and injured almost 72,000 more, with almost half being children. Moishe Feinstein was right to critique Maimonides and the Shofar Shaim. Pikwash Nafresh covers non-Jews. Don't wash this away as self-defense. Zionists erased 60% of civilian infrastructure in the concentration camp. They walled off, and yet only 20% of the Hamas tunnels. They're targeting civilians and their infrastructure to eradicate an entire people's... They're targeting civilians and their infrastructure to eradicate an entire people's, not Hamas. Food and water are not used to craft rockets. Fishermen off the coast are not Hamas. They bombed religious centers and archives and government buildings and bakeries. We heard right here in this room from a young Zionist on campus of their right of return, when Zionists won't even discuss it for any Palestinian refugees. We heard ridiculously inflated numbers of deaths, redacted months ago, and tired racist canards of the dark-skinned savages coming for the white women and children. Zionists never call their prisoners hostages or the Hamas prisoners anything but hostages. My Jewish neighbors, find new rabbis if you must. Sit down, listen, and learn how fundamentalist Zionism is an antisemitic crime against world Jewry. Come together with your neighbors and heal. Vote yes on the original ceasefire.
Please settle down so we can hear the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Addison Gray. I'm currently briefly and against my will a resident of Champaign, but I was born in Urbana. I grew up in Urbana. I come from a long line of proud Urbana residents. My father grew up here. We shared several teachers when we grew up in Urbana Public Schools. My grandparents were both math professors at the University of Illinois. I have always been proud to be from Urbana, a place that I've always seen as a liberal safe haven in what some might call the middle of nowhere. I remember studying anti-war movements led by students of the university while I was in school. I remember in 2003, when the Urbana City Council followed in the footsteps of what was then forty-two other cities and passed the resolution opposing war against Iraq. During all of those moments, I was proud to be from Urbana. I'm not proud to be from Urbana right now. After eight weeks of community members tirelessly showing up at city council meetings, speaking in support of the originally proposed ceasefire resolution, the council has refused to put it on the agenda, and instead, the mayor has now pushed through a resolution that was written without the input of any of our Palestinian Muslim and Arab community members, and that does not even include the word ceasefire. This resolution speaks of peace, but I'd like to ask you how you expect there to be peace when you can't even utter the word ceasefire. There can be no peace without an immediate and permanent stop to the indiscriminate bombing, shooting, and murder of innocent Palestinian civilians, over thirty thousand at this point, and that does not include the bodies that are still trapped underneath the rubble. Within our own community, there can be no peace if the council and the mayor continue to refuse to listen to the voices of those that have been advocating for a ceasefire. On Saturday, seven hundred peaceful community members marched for a ceasefire and against Israel's planned invasion of Rafah on the tenth. There was a grand total of three violent counter protesters there, and I would ask if you can really say that you are listening to your community when you are refusing to include those voices in the writing of the resolution that you are now putting on the table. This resolution is a disgrace. It is unacceptable, and you must go back to the drawing board.
Hello. My name is Chelsea Birchmeier. I'm a resident of Urbana-Champaign. I'm Jewish and a union member. Specifically, I'm a member of the 3,000-strong Graduate Employees Organization and the multi-generational Urbana-Champaign Jews for Ceasefire. I strongly support the addition of a call for an immediate, permanent ceasefire to the resolution. Without a ceasefire as a bare minimum, no just and lasting peace is possible, and people will continue to lose their lives and loved ones to horrific violence. I'm glad to see that, I'm glad to see support for humanitarian aid to Gaza, but that aid cannot reach people if it's accompanied by bombs, especially without the reinstatement of UNRWA funding and without an end to military aid to Israel. If a ceasefire amendment is not added to the resolution, I know that I will not be satisfied, and I will continue to show up to city council meetings, which gives me no pleasure, because I'm a graduate student working multiple jobs and working on a dissertation proposal, and I'm busy, as I'm sure the many of you city council members are as well. I also wanted to mention, related to the presentation today, many graduate students also qualify as asset limited, income constrained, and employed, or ALICE. GEO held a cost of living event a couple weeks ago, and we also passed a ceasefire resolution. We just don't see these issues as disconnected. I believe my fellow union members will keep showing up as well, given that the UAW, AFL-CIO, American Federation of Teachers, Service Employees International Union, or SEIU, just to name a few of the largest unions, have already called for a ceasefire. The conscious Jewish community will continue to show up for a ceasefire too. A poll by the Institute for Social Policy and Understanding showed that fifty percent of Jews in the US and nearly sixty percent of Jewish Democrats support a ceasefire. At this point, even Kamala Harris has spoken up for a ceasefire. Although many of us were not included in the process of writing this resolution, many of us are still coming together now to put our force behind it with the addition of a ceasefire amendment. Now it's time for the Urbana City Council to step up. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? Awesome. Good evening, everybody. My name is Patrick Herr. It's H-E-R-R for the record. I'm a history major with the University of Illinois. I'm involved with a number of amazing activists and political RSOs on the campus. I ought to forgive my preamble here, but as a history major, I just want to put some context in. So in 1938, the Nazi Party, in an effort to suppress its Jewish citizens in the country of Germany, engaged in a night of violence that we today know as the Kristallnacht. They destroyed homes, businesses, rifled through the underwear drawers of Jewish women, raided their homes, forced people out, shut down their utilities, all in an effort to suppress this minority. You might be thinking to yourself, wow, that's awful. I can't believe they would do that. And you're right, because everything I just said, I cannot prove the Nazis did, but I can prove that IDF soldiers did it to Palestinians. All of this is something that's been happening in Palestine today. We sit here and we think that we've learned from history, that we are not repeating our mistakes, and yet today, here, the members of this council are forgetting the lessons we learned at the end of World War II, the lessons we learned in Bosnia, the lessons that we learned in Rwanda, the lessons that we learned in the eighteen hundreds here in the United States, the lessons that we learned all over the world as more powerful governments pushed out minorities off of their homelands and suppressed them, ripping their stories out of the history books. I know what side of history I am on. I ask if you know the same.
Can you hear me? Yeah. Hi, my name is Hippo. I'm a resident of Champaign-Urbana. Isn't it ironic that my grandparents in Palestine have to pay for their property that has been in our family for generations? Imagine where you're living right now and having to pay for your property to not get taken. How stupid does that sound? Please tell me, wouldn't that be stupid? Right? Nod. My experience with being a Palestinian-American, who is a minor, I have had people post me on the internet just for being Palestinian, people trying to leak my information and calling me a terrorist right in front of my face. I can't go to school without people spreading rumors about me that I hate Jews. Jews are not the issue. It's not about religion, so don't bring religion into it, okay? It's about what's happening. People in Gaza are counting women, children, and men that have died, and no, it's not a couple hundreds. It's over thirty thousand dead in Gaza. And on top of that, guess who's funding it? America. America's funding it. I'm basically saying that America is giving money to people who don't need it at all just to go blow up houses and children that are on the street playing. What if you were riding your bike as a child? In thirty seconds, you're getting blown up. Basically. Let's talk about how Palestinian civilians are getting pulled out of the rubble of their own houses. They're having to dig, they're finding their own body under the rubble. How devastating. Like, is that not scary to you? First thing I see while I pull up Instagram is another house getting blown up or a child's organs falling out of their body. There was only a woman holding her, her child's heart in her hand. I know you guys have children. You're holding their heart in your hand. Imagine that. A father holding his own son's hand, disconnected from his body. That is nowhere near normal. Like, is that? No, it's not. Don't forget, there was thirty-six hospitals in Gaza. How many are there now? Zero. There's no place, no place for them to receive aid. It's devastating, seriously. You're, who the hell would say no to a ceasefire? What's happening in Gaza? Like, it's unbelievable. Ceasefire now, thank you.
My name is Alan Cook. I speak tonight on my own behalf. Thank you for the applause. I'm gonna assume it's for me. I speak tonight on my own behalf and on behalf of Sinai Temple in southwest Champaign. I speak in favor of the resolution that is on the agenda for this evening. The resolution brought forward by Ben Jocelyn on January eighth, I will remind everyone, was never added to the Urbana agenda. And you can object to that, but that is clearly because even the council members, and I'm sorry, I forget which were the council members that agreed to sponsor it, but even the council members who agreed to sponsor Mr. Jocelyn's resolution clearly understood that there was some flaws in it. Tonight's resolution was written by, as we've heard, a coalition of people. An open invitation was issued several times. So to say and object that certain populations were not represented in the crafting of this is a deliberate omission on the part of people who chose not to respond to Stav's invitation. I'm confused by some semantics. I'm confused by the insistence on a call for a lasting and permanent ceasefire. If I parse that out, that seems to me that we want a lasting peace, which is exactly what this resolution calls for. A lasting peace will be the best for the Palestinian citizens of Gaza and the West Bank, will be a lasting peace for those who live in Israel, will be a lasting peace for the world. Ben Jocelyn himself stood here on the first few evenings that the resolution that he authored was presented and said that he recognized that this language was not perfect, that he knew that there would need to be changes to this language. And now he is coming forward in recent weeks and in the recent op-ed in the News Gazette and saying, no, this is an absolutely perfect resolution. What has changed? What suddenly makes this perfect? The new resolution on the table is clean and promises a lasting peace for everyone, and I urge this council to adopt it. Thank you.
My name is Esther Pat, and I've lived in Urbana since 1975. I am so sorry that you have to deal with all of this. You'd think that the Urbana City Council has the power to accomplish a ceasefire and that you guys are just being lousy for refusing to do it. What's wrong with you? And while you're at it, when are you gonna cure cancer? And when are you gonna bring about real world peace? I mean, why are you even in government if you're not gonna just fix every single thing that's wrong in the world? I'm so, so sorry that this is now the eighth Urbana City Council meeting where you have all had to sit and listen for hours to debate about a subject over which you have absolutely no control. And that debate is not going to end. And for those, the city council meets forty-eight times a week, I mean, a year. Forty-eight times a year, three or four hours every night, plus there are town board meetings, and they also have a great deal of work to do, not only reading those hundred-plus-page packets and answering all the email and responding to the people who call them, but and talking to each other. It's a huge job, and it is just a tragedy in government that so much time, not only that so much time has to be wasted, but that someone actually stood here and said, you aren't listening. You have spent more time listening to this debate than you spend listening to most things because so many people want to use your meetings as a forum to argue something that is not going to be resolved anywhere in the city of Urbana. And it's just, it's so sad. It's just so, so very sad, and I am so sorry that a lot of you have to put this. By the way, if anyone's interested, the national news has been announcing for the last, at least thirty-six hours that I've watched news, that Israel has agreed to a six-week ceasefire, and we are waiting to hear from Hamas. So if anyone wants a ceasefire, the best place to direct your words would be to Hamas, because they're the ones holding all the cards. Thank you very much for your service.
My name is Rula, and I'm here today primarily as a resident of Champaign-Urbana, a Palestinian-American and a member of the community. I spent my childhood growing up here in Champaign and spending my summers in Palestine, where my parents and several generations of my family were born. I consider it a true privilege to be able to spend my summers in Palestine. My home, as many other Palestinians I know, are unable to return to the villages of their families because many Palestinian villages were erased during the 1948 Nakba, the forced displacement of Palestinians. The irony lies in the fact that America promotes identity formation while simultaneously arming and sponsoring the genocide that is systematically eradicating Palestinian identity. I would like you all to consider why it is so difficult to demand an actual, immediate, and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, given that the United States educational system covers a thorough account of the Holocaust and its history in the hopes that it won't happen again, even though the ongoing bombardment of Gaza is repeating that history. I want the council to reflect on how the crimes occurring in Gaza have not only continued since October seventh, but have also been occurring for seventy-five years by Israel. The council is demonstrating an apparent lack of urgency on this matter, and with that being said, the increasingly devastating circumstances we witness on a daily basis in Gaza provide us, provide as both vivid evidence of Israel's destructive and invasive military tactics and confirmation of your allies' neutrality, which has allowed over thirty thousand people, including at least twelve thousand three hundred children, to be killed. Israel's relentless bombing in Gaza is another evident occurrence which displays the characteristics of a genocide, and yet each of you are sitting here waiting for Gaza to become another tourist attraction for Israel to steal. And what, just for history books in the future to display another instance of genocide? If so, you have the choice. And now the question I ask you is, will each of you make the choice to sit here and wait for more violence to occur, or will you call for an immediate and impermanent ceasefire that will end this genocide? Thank you. Ceasefire now.
My name is Robert Nauman. I'm once again a resident of Urbana, at least for now. Some of you know me. I am a former Democratic elected official in Champaign County and also a Jew, not yet a member of CU Jews for, or UC Jews for Ceasefire, I just applied to join. I think the most important thing I want to underline, it was mentioned once briefly, the change in the situation that's happened in the last forty-eight hours, which is that yesterday in Selma, Alabama, Vice President Kamala Harris called for an immediate ceasefire, her exact words, and this was not an off-the-cuff remark. This was, she was not representing herself as an individual. She was speaking on behalf of the Biden administration. If you follow the press on this, it was clearly a decision by the Biden administration to have Kamala Harris call for immediate ceasefire. So this is, the idea that immediate ceasefire is a radical demand does not fit the objective reality today. The Democratic Vice President of the United States has called for an immediate ceasefire, and Urbana, as we all know, is a Democratic town. When we had a referendum on the Iraq War, 2006, I think we had between eighty and ninety percent of the vote in the referendum was for ending the Iraq War. That's what Democrats in Urbana are like, as you know. The situation now is a total emergency. The UN aid groups have been calling for a ceasefire. There is no plausible story for addressing the imminent famine in Gaza, getting aid in. The trucks are backed up at the Egypt-Gaza border. It's not a question of not enough aid, it's the aid can't get in. The aid groups have been calling for ceasefire for some time because there is no plausible story to stop the famine besides a ceasefire. So aid can function. The UN and the aid groups cannot function in Gaza right now, given the security situation as we saw a few days ago. The last thing I want to say is that there is something relatively unique about this situation, which is the brokenness, unfortunately, of our which is the brokenness, unfortunately, of our national political system on this question. At the outset, in October, Josh Paul, the guy in the Biden administration, State Department official, responsible for overseeing the compliance of US military aid with US law, resigned in protest because he knew he wasn't gonna be allowed to do his job. And this is after, you know, the last nine years of the struggle over the Yemen War, where US law was not enforced. Multiple laws are being violated. This is why it makes sense for, to take the extraordinary measure of appealing to the Urbana City Council.
If you have other comments, you can leave them via email.
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? Hello, council members and the mayor. My name is Alexa Urquhart. Urquhart's being spelled U-R-Q-U-H-A-R-T. I am a barista, a grad student. I raise my family here too and I am an active member of the city of Urbana. I'm not very articulate as the people in front of me, but I have a few things that I'd like to share with you today. The everlasting peace resolution that I read on the agenda doesn't really mean much to me. Not a damn thing. I wonder if you have seen the image coming out of Occupied Palestine, the world's largest open-air prison? Have you seen the people strewn out in the street? I don't think human beings are meant to see dead bodies, let alone so rapidly. Crushed by IDF tanks. The only thing that are left are little legs and arms of children. People being burned by white phosphorus. Do you know that white phosphorus is against the law to use on an international scale? White phosphorus sinks into the skin and dissolves quickly into oil and fat, which is what our bodies are made of. If you pour water on it, it creates phosphor, which can kill in 15 minutes. It is a nauseous gas. Slaughtered just for getting flour. Women dying of toxic shock syndrome and other related illnesses due to lack of proper menstrual hydrant products due to the tanks and A-trucks being stopped at the Egyptian Gaza border. I have really bad agoraphobia. I have a hard time leaving my apartment and especially speaking my mind so freely. But I have been emailing y'all every week since January with no response. Obviously, those emails are not getting through to you, so I'm here to you in person. I want you to look me in the eye. I want you to hear what I'm saying. I feel sick to my stomach. I'm disgusted by the lack of will and backbone to put this resolution, if you can call it that, forward. How dare you? Shame on you. It does not keep the peace to soften the support for Palestinian people. The silence speaks volumes and though it may not be purposeful, aid Zionists. Keeping the peace is not an option when people are dying. Zionists don't care about peace and speaking in a way that refuses to acknowledge and shame the actions that we are seeing. I'm sorry, that we are seeing innocent people being murdered for the crime of who they are. It's just being complacent and turning a blind eye to those who need the voice most right now. Permanent and immediate ceasefire now.
Okay, it's the next speaker's turn. Can you quiet down? Thank you.
I'm Mark Snear, citizen of Urbana, American, proud Israeli, and proud Zionist. And I want to say a few things. First thing, you did a good job with this proposal. Nobody seems to be angry about what is in the proposal. People have suggestions for what is not in this proposal. And in particular, people push for a request for a resolution, asking for a ceasefire. And indeed, Vice President Kamala did that, expressing the need for an immediate ceasefire. And she called for Hamas to agree to an immediate ceasefire. And if the council of Urbana wants to call Hamas to agree to a ceasefire, I will be very supportive of that. Because now the reason we don't have a ceasefire is Hamas, not Israel. Hamas is interested, like any terrorist organization, in seeing the situation get worse and worse. Because the worse the situation is, the more support it gets from the Palestinians, the more support it gets from Palestinian sympathizers. A terrorist organization always believes that the worse it is, the better it is for their cause. If the council wants to express its disgust from this behavior of Hamas, I will be very supportive. But let's be clear, we don't have a ceasefire today because of Hamas, not because of Israel. I don't like, I would like to add many more things to this proposal, to this resolution. I would like it to declare clearly that Hamas has to be dismantled. There cannot be a peace between Israel and the Palestinians as long as Hamas, an organization that is dedicated to the destruction of the Jewish state, is playing, is leading the war against Israel. What is needed today is for the two sides to sit together. I'm disgusted by many things that are happening in the area. It's a disaster, it's terrible. And both sides have much to be blamed for. But both sides now are increasingly polarized. Both sides are increasingly opposed to any discussion, any meeting, any bridge between them. What Urbana can do is to contribute to building the bridges rather than contribute to the continuous hate and the continuous attempts to put an end to the existence of a Jewish state. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Amnon and I would like to talk about context and responsibility. I support this resolution because it doesn't just call for peace. It does so along with context, for a peace that is equitable for both sides. Is it perfect and complete? Maybe not. But both sides are represented in the language of this resolution and I appreciate that this resolution was brought about through efforts at dialogue. In contrast, a call for ceasefire is one-sided. A call for Israel to stop everything that they are doing. A one-sided resolution is a judgment. Since when do city councils pass judgments on wars on the other side of the world? That is not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to pass resolutions and action relating to movements like Alice that we heard before. The balanced resolution before you, one for peace for two states represented by their own groups, is a moral statement, that we support peace. We support equal rights for everyone, everywhere. If we must make statements on this war, let them be moral ones. Do not play jurors or judges in a trial to which you were not appointed, nor given all relevant evidence, which even international courts of justice struggle to obtain. I would support a ceasefire, under the right circumstances, with the right context. I don't know what that context is and neither does anyone else in this room. And to call for a ceasefire without that context is frankly irresponsible.
Hello, council. My name is Asha Sani, former Urbana resident, current Champaign resident, still working in Urbana, and I'm a graduate student union member. I hosted the recent Costa Living event and shared Alice statistics with the community. I'm not Palestinian nor Jewish, but my family knows intergenerational trauma and displacement. My grandparents survived genocide, only for my father to survive two more. I owe much of my political education to three rabbis I urge all of you to look up, Rabbis Brent Rosen, Lynn Gottlieb, and Arianna Katz. The stories I grew up with of my relatives dying of thirst, of my father learning what burning human flesh smells like, and his experience of leaving his home under gunfire to never see it again, have still not prepared me for the 21st century livestreaming of genocide. The common understanding in my family was that no one knew enough about the reality of these atrocities to stop them. But now that it is being livestreamed, often by Israeli soldiers themselves with smiles on their faces on TikTok, what is the excuse? Lastly, if we cannot appeal to you on a political level due to your fear of backlash from donors who make far more money than I do as a graduate student, I will try to appeal to you on a human level. Every credible expert on famine on this earth is saying Gaza is starving. If 2 million people die, what will you tell your children and grandchildren when they learn about these atrocities in schools, books, and museums? Will you be able to sleep at night knowing it would have cost you nothing to stand on the right side of history? Maybe you disagree on the details or feel you don't know enough, although there's lots of people trying to give you this information. But isn't even the risk that 2 million people could perish enough to stir up a molecule of human decency and bravery? Only the original ceasefire resolution stands on the right side of history. And at the very least, what it stands to accomplish is to clear your human conscience. The current one clearly does not take into account both sides as displayed by the content of all the previous comments. Also, there are numerous constituents of yours who have family in Gaza, who have lost 10, 20, 30 relatives. Why are, why are those not constituents to you? Are they not human? You have dehumanized specific people and given far too much credence to others who have peddled fake news that literally every other credible person on earth has come together to discredit. Please, like, at a certain point, I get that you want to stand with the status quo, but what if the status quo shifts and you become just like the Nazis? That's what I'm asking you.
No, we're not gonna be doing that. There's a speaker at the mic.
My name is Benjamin Cosman. I'm an Urbana resident from Ward 7 and I'm here to support the resolution for peace that is on your agenda, as written with no changes. I still believe there should be no resolution at all since foreign policy isn't city business. And if there has to be a resolution, but I were writing it, it would look quite different. It would drop the false parallels between the sides and it would call for the dismantlement of Hamas. But you shouldn't pass my resolution because you represent Urbana, not just me. And that's why you should pass the exact resolution on your table, even though I don't like it. That resolution was the result of a lengthy and civil discussion between Urbana residents from both sides. And that is a far better way to choose the wording than anything I've heard in this forum with its angry three-minute speeches and no true dialogue. So please, don't modify this text and overrule the one civil compromise the two sides could make. Pass it unchanged or pass nothing at all. Thank you.
My name is Wes Bollinger. I'm a Champaign County resident and a Jewish man. I understand the recent news and BP Harris's call for ceasefire, but I maintain my statement until this violence truly ends. As a Jew, I have been a direct victim of violent antisemitism on multiple occasions, including having been pinned to a wall with a knife held to my throat for the crime of being Jewish. I say this not for sympathy, but so my words will carry as much weight as possible when I say the following in asking the council to call for a true ceasefire. It is not an antisemitic action to criticize the Netanyahu administration for their role in accelerating this humanitarian crisis and allowing their soldiers to commit atrocities. The Israeli government runs a propaganda ministry as strong or stronger than any modern nation, one of the foremost goals of which is to consider any criticism of the government's policies to be antisemitism, in purpose keeping the administration insulated from backlash for their horrific and violent actions. Do not listen to the voices that paint this conflict as too complicated to have an opinion about. It is not only moral, but a core tenet of Judaism to ask hard questions, especially of those in positions of authority. Netanyahu cannot be allowed to continue this war covering his own negligence of security at the border resulting in the October 7th massacre by Hamas. As others have stated, I ask the Urbana City Council to work with the good-concerned citizens in this community together to pass a genuine hostage release and explicit ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maxwell Rizzo and I am a graduate student and state employee. And I'm here for the third time in recent months to urge the city council to pass a ceasefire resolution. A real ceasefire resolution. I am here today, I have a lot of homework due tomorrow, but I'm here today because there is not a single university left standing in Gaza. Not one. Do you hear what I just said? There is not a single university left in Gaza. They have all been destroyed by bombs. I would now ask all the students in the audience and the people who have gone through education to put themselves in their shoes. I don't like using hypotheticals, but here is one I feel that we must use. I asked myself what I would do as a graduate student, as a first-year physics student, if my university was destroyed. And I know the answer immediately. I would revolt. I would oppose the people who did it in every way, shape, and form. To have another answer is to lie. Gaza is in shambles. It is destroyed. Almost all infrastructure is gone. This isn't a genocide in progress, this is a genocide near completion. The last of the Palestinian people are now sheltering in Rafah where they risk being invasion, being invaded every single day. I am happy that the council has finally been spurred into action, bringing a resolution of some sort. But from my attendance in the city council meetings, I felt nothing but shame to be associated with this Urbana City Council. After the last weeks, two city council members spoke. I believe it was Mayor Marlin and Ms. Wilken. As a community, we listened. We listened to you admit to inaction over multiple months of destruction. We listened, as you said, you did not want to place the burden of drafting the ceasefire on the community, yet you did anyway. We listened to you as you asked Stav to take the lead on drafting the resolution. We know the reason that you did not mention any of the Palestinian community members who poured their hearts out. We know why you did not mention any of the Palestinian community members who have directly lost family members. There is no parody. We know the reason why. We know the reason why the first party condemned in the peace resolution on the agenda is Hamas. The reason is, is because you prefer a white person over a Muslim. I feel nothing but shame to be led by a council perpetuating white supremacy. Every day without a ceasefire that actually does something is another day that the engineers, scientists, and contractors run free on our campus. I know it because I see it every day. I stare contractors straight in the face as they try to participate in our campus and I do not want to see it anymore. Please reel the, please reel the businesses in. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, I'm Terry Barnes, resident of Urbana, professor at the university. I'm proud that it's been eight council meetings that all these people have shown up. I think that this is actually democracy in action and foreign affairs is very much relevant here because if Urbana passes this resolution, Representative Budzinski will have to notice. If Representative Budzinski notices, it could be that she will bring it up on the floor of the Congress. And so we are all related in that chain of democracy and it's very important, therefore, that this statement be made. I didn't have time to map out a three-minute lesson plan on what is wrong with the current resolution. But it does, it does remind me, when people talk about both sides, it does sadly remind me of the situation where people said that the enslaved and the slave owners were two sides and really, if we could only come up with a reasonable solution for everybody, there wouldn't be a problem anymore. I think that the current resolution, I think I wrote in to you in an email that said it's like sweet icing covering a cesspool of genocide. So it is inadequate, it is wrong. It's a kind of a, it's trying to sweep away a problem that will not be swept away, as you can see from the 100 people who are outside in the hallway. The last thing I want to say is that I think that the children of Gaza who are being slaughtered are not only the children of Gaza, they are our children as well. That's, they're, they're, they're my children, they're your children, they're the children of everyone who's here in this room. And for the sake of our common humanity, there has to be a ceasefire. The bombs have to stop falling, the phosphorus has to stop being thrown, the bullets have to stop being shot. There must be a ceasefire and Urbana should go, should, should return to a ceasefire resolution and pass it. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Jayden Andrews and I am a senior at the University of Illinois as well as a proud Jew in our community. I just want to address a few things real quick and a lot of misinformation that's being spread. The first thing is about the equality going on within Gaza and Palestine. Women are treated significantly worse than men in the community. 65% of women are unemployed. And if you want to talk about equality, I feel like we should start there. Or we could talk about the 90 men and women who identified as LGBT who escaped Gaza and went to Israel because they were, quote, "facing extreme horrors" in their community. Not to mention one unnamed person who was continuously beat. Year after year, Hamas would arrest him, hang him. Hamas would arrest him, hang him by his feet, and beat him, time and time again. If you want to talk about equality, I feel like it should start there, and a ceasefire means that we are calling for a continuation of Hamas. A continuation of Hamas means that these atrocities are going to happen all throughout every community, and I urge you guys to keep the resolution you have now. It protects the Jews, it protects everyone here, and it calls for people to be safe in their community here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morty. I am a resident of the City of Champaign, originally from New York. I do want to echo what somebody said before about feeling bad for the City Council for having to listen to all this, but I want to bring it from a different angle. Antisemitism, as you can hear, you heard the claps before when Chris Sinah was mentioned, antisemitism has many different forms for thousands of years. And the reason why I want to tell this to you is to save you time also from listening to all this, is because antisemitism will never stop. It will stop only when, as Judaism is taught, that the end of days, everyone will see the light of God, and there will be peace. That will be true peace, when everyone sees the good in everyone. I lost more family members in the Israel War of Independence than in the Holocaust. My grandfather was born there, my great-grandfather was born there, and all we see is that for so many years, hundreds of thousands, hundreds and thousands of years, what Jews have been going through. And I didn't prepare a speech, this is purely out of my heart, I don't know what I'm saying, but I will say this, that for Jews around the world, and for you guys, know that whatever peace is being talked about here, it's not going to change. We've been talking about peace since 1948, since way before that. I have family members who were killed in the 1928 massacre in Hebron by a bunch of Arabs who walked in there and slaughtered people in their homes. I was in Israel a couple of years ago, and I was chilling with my family, and all of a sudden, there was a statement put out by Hamas that said that they were going to kidnap a man, a woman, and a child, and we were still two hours away from our home in Jerusalem. And I remember being so scared that, like, what are we going to do? How are we going to get home? And thank God we got home safely. This is an ongoing problem, and it's not going to end by our talks and our conversations about peace, because, as we said before, there's a ceasefire going on. I didn't hear the news, I don't know, but Kamala Harris got up and said about a ceasefire, and we're waiting for Hamas. I'm just going to tell you guys, as a proud Jew, and for all Jews who are watching and listening to this, remember that no one will take us down, no one will destroy us. We have, all we have is ourself and our God, and God will stand with us forever and ever, and they will try to tear us down as the Egyptians did, as the Crusades did, as they killed thousands of Jews as marching through up until Jerusalem, and they killed Muslims as well, and they killed thousands of Jews in the process, but we're still here, and we'll be here forever, and I'm Israel Chai forever.
My name is Timur Obergberg. Just like the previous speaker, I'm Jewish and a resident of Champaign. And unlike the previous speaker, I actually have my prepared notes, and I'm here to urge this council to support the lasting peace resolution. And I may look familiar to you. I spoke here in the past a couple of times, and I was opposing the ceasefire resolution that was on the table then. And I did this because I believe that it's not the City Council's job to weigh in on the problems of world peace, which is kind of really beyond the City Council's control. And I still believe this is to be the case. However, over the course of those meetings, I've heard a lot of people speak about this resolution, for and against, with passion and with conviction. And for this reason, I think that you should adopt the resolution prepared by STAV, the compromised resolution calling for the lasting peace. And the reason is that once this truly compromised resolution will help this community to heal and lower the level of acrimony and allow us to concentrate on our commonalities. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Excuse me. I am Shawna Miller, Urbana resident, taxpayer, and voter. I will say that as I, when I wrote this, I didn't, maybe things have changed since I last started writing this, and if that's the case, then I apologize, but I will say it is true that Hamas and Israel both have bypassed potential ceasefire opportunities over the last several months. All of the negotiations that I have seen brought to the table involve temporary ceasefires at best, not permanent ceasefires, which make the negotiations difficult to agree to when a ceasefire needs to be permanent. Even so, just this weekend, Hamas went to Egypt for negotiations, but Netanyahu did not appear for these negotiations. As long as bombing continues, negotiations cannot be reached, and it is doubtful that they will be reached by Ramadan. This is the situation surrounding this. The situation surrounding this is something I can't understand. People say that with ceasefire, Hamas will attack again, but nothing about a ceasefire claims that Israel can't protect its borders. It means they cannot actively terrorize, traumatize, torture, and murder civilians within the walls of Gaza. It means that Israel can no longer starve civilians or shoot them while attempting to retrieve aid. There's a difference. Because of the current state of the issue, this endless cycle where no one wants to budge, the only thing that would force peace would be a permanent ceasefire that is honored by both sides. This resolution you are considering today never mentioned ceasefire, which is the pressure we as activists are trying to place on the people of power who can negotiate and enforce such agreements. The purpose of the resolution proposed from the beginning was to join the cities of Chicago, Atlanta, San Francisco, Detroit, and Portland, and the many unions and other organizations, millions of people throughout the country who have stood together to demand this permanent ceasefire. At least 60% of the country agrees with this solution. Since I last spoke two weeks ago, at least 10 children have perished due to famine, but it is likely more. Others have been shot and killed while rummaging the ruins for food, yet aid drops of any substantial nature do not exist in the north. Why? Because Israel wants to force them south, so that everyone can be in one place. It is almost the holy month of Ramadan. Israel claims to potentially invade Rafah in the coming weeks. The very place that they claimed would be safe, and that 1.5 million people chose to believe, as the military's goal currently advertises, they could potentially invade during the holy weeks of Ramadan to add insult to injury. From my perspective, the goal is to force everyone into one place, for possibly the worst massacre we may see in real time. We can add our voice to the many other voices pressuring our government before this potential massacre occurs. And other resolutions, oh, sorry, I lost my spot. That being said, I find it interesting that a resolution of this magnitude was only allotted 1.5 hours to negotiate, which comes from someone who was in the room at the time. 1.5 hours while meanwhile people are dying, and somehow, for those of us advocating for peace, lost the one term in the resolution that made it what it is, a ceasefire resolution.
Hello, my name is Josh. I'm a lifelong Urbana resident. Where to even begin? First of all, I think the fact that people are not too pleased with this shows that it actually is the resolution to pass. That's what a compromise is, it makes nobody happy. I mean, you know, if I were to write it, I certainly wouldn't include the part about the ICJ, simply because Hamas is not a party to the ICJ. Having said that, I don't think you need to make any changes. The discussion that has gone on here for the last eight weeks has been abhorrent. You've seen people applaud loudly tonight. Well, first of all, just in the hallways, when a big crowd of Jewish students were walking out, they were chanting them "Ceasefire now." Okay. Can I finish, please?
No, 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 no. No. Please continue speaking.
Okay. You had a person come here last week and speak again tonight, telling us, what is Jews we are supposed to believe? Where in the world does he have the balls to do that? I mean, that's disgusting. Christopher Evans, you're my ward person, I reached out to you today, I hope that you will consider passing this as is, because as a result of this even being brought to the council for a presentation without being read by the two people who co-sponsored it, this is what has erupted here. I mean, at the very least, you should have read it. I think I would like Mr. Evans and Ms. Wilken to at least take some accountability on that as public officials. The person who just spoke in front of me two weeks ago talked about how at least the Nazis fed their prisoners, blatant Holocaust denial. The person who's speaking after me, who brought the first resolution, is on camera tearing hostage posters down, talking about, oh, well, I would protect my Jewish neighbors, but then applauding the speaker who says, well, at least the Nazis fed their prisoners. I don't have even the time, it's already been a minute and a half, to get into the debunking and the talking about all these points that have been leveled in front of you. Kamala Harris's statement said we need a ceasefire for at least six weeks. That's called a temporary ceasefire? For what purpose? To get hostages out, get aid in. They would like to build on that, I think it would be great if they could build on that. This is not some breaking news, though, this has been the Biden administration's position for some time now. As she herself said, yes, Israel has agreed to the framework, we are waiting on Hamas, Beni Netanyahu's got the flu, I think that's probably why he didn't, and I'm no Bibi fan. I went to an anti-Bibi protest in July, he has the flu right now, that's why he didn't attend that most recent meeting. Okay, so what else? Yeah, I know, it's very funny. I don't really know what else to say, this has been madness. Balagan for the last eight weeks here. Please pass this as written. Oh, and I just want to say, I didn't realize you were all Nazis and white supremacists, that's news to me. Really interesting to know. Right, okay. Thank you.
Hey there, everybody. My name's Ben Jocelyn, and I stand here nervous, full of stress, week after week. But the truth is on our side. Folks say they built a coalition. I don't know what folks know about a coalition, but the folks who are standing with me are the CU Juice for Ceasefire, the Muslim Action Committee, the unions, the list continues to grow of different political parties and individuals, and folks who represent different groups from across our community in a beautiful, beautiful, loving section of our community which wants peace, because when I first came before you, there were about 3,000 Palestinians who'd been killed by Israel and the full support of the United States government, and there was about 1,200 people who'd been killed in Israel of various nationalities, primarily Israeli. Over 27,000 Palestinian people have died, run over by tanks, had their graveyards destroyed, mothers giving birth without access to medical care, infants who were tried for for their parents for years, right? We read stories of mothers who try with IVF, and for any of you who haven't, like, witnessed your friends or family members try and get pregnant and not be able to, and struggle for years to have that happen, and then after years of trying, finally being successful, and then a bomb drops and kills both your new baby precious children. That happened last week. We're not, we're trying to stop an ongoing catastrophe, year or week after week after week, day after day after day. What is happening is a slaughter that is being sponsored by the US government and perpetrated by the Israeli government, and it needs to stop. I don't know how many people have to die before we think a ceasefire is the right idea. This is not a radical demand, this is not proposing that we know the solution to age-old, complicated political problem, this is saying ceasefire now, stop firing, to pretend that somehow a ceasefire is a one-sided idea. Whoever is called the ceasefire when one side stops firing, a ceasefire is when both sides stop firing. This intentional misrepresentation of the voices and opinions and lives and precious people that continue to come before you and say we want peace is unacceptable from our community, the folks, the fact that 400 people came before you and said, or that 400 emails got sent before ceasefire was even described, and they said, we can't have that proposition, they said, we can't have this one. Like, there's an ideology that says this war can continue, and that is not acceptable, and you should stand on that, like, you should stand with the folks who say we need peace, because everyone here is precious. Everyone here is precious. Free Palestine, free Palestine, ceasefire now.
First off, I'd like to start by mentioning that it is actually this council's responsibility to call for a ceasefire resolution, because our taxes are funding this genocide. I don't want my money to be going to killing my people. I am a soon-to-be transfer student into the U of I. I was raised in Urbana-Champaign, and I am the daughter of two Palestinians, one of them being a 1967 refugee. And I would like to say how disgusted and appalled I am over the fact that my community has had to come here every week for over two months to convince the people we elected and voted for to call for a ceasefire resolution. The fact that I have to stand up here and try and convince you that the killing of 30,000 Palestinians, civilians, in the name of self-defense makes no sense is disturbing. You're telling me that the girl who was found hanging from her building in Gaza with her body torn apart after bombing is self-defense? You're telling me that the boy who was run over by an Israeli tank and was crushed with his organs oozing out, by the way, that was a little boy, is considered self-defense? You're telling me that the boy who was run over by a tank was self-defense? You're telling me that the woman and her grandson, who were trying to flee while holding a white flag saying that they would like to cause no harm, after that, they were killed by an Israeli sniper? You're telling me that that was considered self-defense? Just last week, over 100 people were killed, and also almost over 700 were injured while they were trying to get flour so that they could just eat. By the way, for the past few weeks, they've been eating animal feed instead of flour because they can't, they don't have access to food. This has been killing them as well. Oh, and by the way, when we say injured, we don't just mean, like, a few scratches, we mean shot at, getting shrapnel stuck in their neck and their side, needing amputations due to the fact that their legs are falling off, and by the way, all of the surgeries, all of the C-sections for women giving birth, it's all done without anesthesia, it's all done without any sort of pain medication, they just have to go through it. You think all of these people that were injured and killed, all of this was considered self-defense? No, none of these acts were self-defense. Each and every one of them were targeted and killed by Israeli soldiers. There is a question that I heard that I would like to ask all of you, if you could please pay attention. If there was a Hamas member hiding in an Israeli hospital or a school, would the Israeli soldiers use these same tactics to get rid of this Hamas soldier?
Thank you. You can email the rest of your comments to the council if you need to.
My name is Ferlous, and I'm a constituent of the Champaign County, but I'm also a citizen of Rwanda, a country that survived the genocide, so when I speak of a genocide, I know what I'm talking about. I'm here to unequivocally support that the resolution for a permanent ceasefire is passed. It's beyond difficult to describe the emotions felt by myself and many others in this community as we go into five months of ongoing genocide in Gaza. Despite our repeated pleas, it seems our voices continue to fall on deaf ears. The heart-wrenching stories of Palestinians losing loved ones fails to cause your action, and the staggering death toll fails to evoke empathy. However, one undeniable truth remains: It doesn't require expertise or extraordinary compassion to recognize the moral bankruptcy that lies in the senseless killing of over 30,000 innocent civilians in Gaza, many of whom are women and children. Even if you argue that Hamas is using the civilians as human shield, which is so flawed on so many levels, will wiping out a 2.1-plus million populations be worth it? If not, then when will enough be enough? In January, Chicago passed a ceasefire resolution, not because every resident was in agreement, but because it recognized the urgency of the situation. Similarly, expecting a unanimous support from our smaller population is unrealistic. The fear of causing division within our community should not be a barrier to calling for a permanent ceasefire, because divisiveness has already existed, and it's manifesting in many ways. As peaceful protesters are disrupted by Zionists to the point of causing bodily injury to them, as every Palestinian in this county now feels unsafe even doing something as simple as wearing a kaffiyah, and as we all leave these meetings with no ceasefire, losing faith in our elected officials, divisiveness has already started. Following Chicago's lead and calling for a permanent ceasefire, we can at least ensure that this divisiveness is in service of a greater cause, which is ending the suffering. that this divisiveness is in service of a greater cause, which is ending the suffering and killing of innocent children, mothers, and fathers in Gaza. And make no mistake, I come here not because I'm a Muslim or because I have Palestinian friends, but because I would be here if this genocide was happening to any other group of people.
Hello, my name is Barry, and I'm a student at UIUC. I am demanding you to call for a permanent ceasefire now. This issue cannot be delayed any further as the Palestinians are starving to death and resorting to eating grass and animal food to survive. Many children in Gaza, who typically need balanced meals every day to grow, are having to skip meals and even go entire days without eating because there is no food or aid in Gaza. Children are being starved, and family members are being killed just by walking outside on the street, trying to provide food for their family, because you couldn't have enough empathy to look at the atrocities in Palestine and do everything in your power to make it stop. How is it that the leaders of Urbana are not even competent enough to take even the bare steps to end the horrific violence in Palestine? And also, I want to reiterate that this ceasefire resolution is absolutely Urbana City Council business. You could absolutely be using the money that you are currently funneling towards genocide in Palestine to help the people that are low income, like in the Alice presentation that you gave earlier today. This resolution is absolutely our business, and you should treat it as your utmost priority. Free Palestine and ceasefire now.
Hello, I am Leon Smith. I am a resident of Urbana, and I support a permanent ceasefire in Palestine. This resolution that is on the table is incomplete. Permanent ceasefire is the only path towards peace. Otherwise, you're just delaying another massacre. This is city business, despite what many people have come up here to proclaim. Obviously, the fact that people have been showing up here for the past eight weeks demanding that you call for a ceasefire shows that this is what your constituents want. And that is your job. Your job is to represent your constituents, and I think it's pretty clear by the crowd outside what we believe. Now, let's talk about peace, because a lot of people have been throwing that word around, and I don't think that we all know what it means. Peace is not when no one resists your oppression. I'll say that again. Peace is not when no one resists oppression. You cannot have peace without justice and liberation. 75 years of settler colonialism, ethnic cleansing, and apartheid is not peace. The fact that people are using the elimination of Hamas as a pretext for this genocide is absurd. The Palestinian resistance has manifested in many forms. It will continue to exist as long as the settler colonial apartheid state, so-called Israel, continues to steal their land, burn their olive trees, bomb their schools, deny their history, appropriate their culture, and not even allow Palestinians the right to return from their, to their homelands. By failing to take action for the past several months and by putting this toothless, so-called ceasefire resolution on the table, you have made yourself complicit in genocide. We will continue to show up and challenge you on this until you take real, meaningful action towards ending this violence by calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, divesting from the Zionist entity, and taking real action to support the Palestinians in your community. To conclude, I finish with the poem, "Oh, Rascal Children of Gaza," by Khalid Jama. "Oh, rascal children of Gaza, you who constantly disturbed me with your screams under my window, you who filled every morning with rush and chaos, you who broke my vase and stole the lonely flower on my balcony. Come back and scream as you want and break all the vases, steal all the flowers. Come back, just come back."
Hello, my name is Kate, and I am a resident of Urbana. I have to say, I think it's kind of funny that people are apologizing to you for wasting your time when Israel has destroyed the lives of 30,000 people. They will never get that time back. They have lost children. They, they weren't meant to live lives where they lived till 70, 80, 90, 100 years old. They've had so much time that was stolen from them. And yet, here you are, spending only, what, three, four, or five hours every week, and you are complaining you're going to apologize to for wasting your time. I think it's absolutely ridiculous. I also think it's ridiculous that we're basically, we're arguing over whether it's okay to starve groups of people, to run them over, to shoot innocent civilians. That's the argument. Some people are saying, "It's okay to starve and kill all civilians." But, you know, it's okay, it's okay. And the other side is saying, "No, it's not. Civilians should be kept safe. That should be a priority for everyone in the world." These people did nothing wrong. They were born in Palestine, and because of that, they have died. I also think it's ridiculous that someone you roll your eyes up here as we speak. These are lives that are being murdered, okay? I don't think you understand. You are so, so privileged, as am I and everyone else in this room, to stand up here and be able to talk to you about this. You're privileged to be able to have a position of power where you can have your voice heard. We, we do not. You, we trusted you, and we no longer do because you have misused that trust. You have abused it. You, I find it reprehensible that anyone on this council would vote against a ceasefire resolution or even refuse to vote on one. You basically are saying you have no regard for Palestinian lives and that you would rather not rock the boat than stand up for your residents and for people across the world. I think a question that one of my peers came up and asked, she ran out of time, but she was asking, "If Hamas was hiding in a hospital with Israeli civilians in it, would they also bomb the entire hospital?" No, they would not. They would not bomb their own civilians. So why are they allowed to bomb Palestinian civilians in a hospital? I also want to point out that people have said that 30,000 civilians, it's not a true number, and it's not 30,000. It's way more than that, because they are not counting the dead right now. They're trying to keep the living alive. The hospitals, only a third of them are even at partial functioning right now, a third. They are trying to work with massive amounts of numbers that they are not equipped to deal with. They are not focusing on counting the dead. There are thousands of more dead under the rubble, thousands left in their homes that no one has seen, thousands that we will not find out until this genocide ends. I just want to say my last thing. I will come back every, every single week until a real ceasefire that calls for a permanent, immediate ceasefire is passed. I will not tire of this. Free Palestine, ceasefire now.
Okay, we have a speaker at the mic. Can you settle down now? Stop. We have a speaker at the mic. Thank you for your peace and quiet.
Hi, my name is Stavashur. I'm a resident of Urbana. First, I want to thank the council and the mayor for helping me facilitate some dialogue in the community. And I want to say that someone in the room, when we were having dialogue, when we were talking about how nice it felt to have a dialogue and a conversation, they had some experience in local politics, and they said, "You don't know how rare this is," talking about the dialogue that we had there. I just wish we'll have more of this in our community in the future. Thank you very much. I also want to thank the people who approached me and contacted me and were a part of this, or the people who were not able.
I'm Stuart Levy. I live in Champagne, but I spend a lot of my life in Urbana, so I feel like I have a stake in this. Yes? So, let me see. I'd like to offer you a framing for you as the council to think about this as you consider whether to accept an amendment to the proposed resolution to call for a ceasefire. And it would be like this. So, let me see. So, the resolution as written calls for an immediate exchange of hostages and prisoners. So, that, that would return to the people of Israel, something that they dearly want and legitimately want, the return of hostages, most of whom had no role in the conflict, and, you know, they're, they're victims of an ongoing war that didn't start on October 7th, but they were caught up in a terrible part of it. But, that war has not stopped on October 7th, as you have heard. It is now taking the lives of tens of thousands of Palestinians in Gaza, and it will continue to do that. And so, if, if you say, "Well, we have an even-handed resolution that promptly gives Israel something that it dearly wants and leaves at risk the lives of hundreds of thousands of people in Gaza who are on the verge of famine and whom a continuing, a continuing conflict will put their lives at, their, their lives are already at great peril." So, anything that you can offer that would give the minimum to the people of Gaza, most of whom had no role in making this conflict, I urge that you do that. I don't ask that you ask Hamas to disarm any more than I would ask for you to ask the IDF to disarm. Neither of those is an appropriate thing for you to ask. But you can ask for the end of a conflict that the US is fueling, and I hope you do.
Can you lower this sound, this banner? There are folks behind you that our views are obstructed.
My view was obstructed when I--
Well, you can stand at the back with the sign. I'm not saying you're obstructing views from folks behind you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Your观点 policy on that?
I'm sorry, this isn't a dialogue. That was a request. Thank you for lowering. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Jake McGinty, a resident of Urbana and a Jew. I was in many ways optimistic up to the last meeting to hear the council speak publicly that we, as residents of Urbana, deserve more transparency, that after weeks and weeks of effort, we deserve to have a resolution voted on or clearly explained why it would be rejected, the original resolution, that is. Councilmember Wilkins spoke up, thanking us for our input, and spoke in favor of a ceasefire resolution that came from the people, which was a hopeful breath of fresh air, and I thank her for that comment. Mayor Marlin also spoke up in favor of resolving the issue. To my surprise, she also said, "We will work with Stav and anyone who works with him," an invitation for collaboration not previously extended to Ben Josselin, who wrote the original proposal for a resolution, which is interesting. This new resolution proposed by Mayor Marlin made me think someone got inspired by the Indiana Jones scenes where he swaps out the valuable artifact for a bag of sand, hoping that nobody noticed. And we noticed. It feels that ridiculous, honestly. The resolution reads as the all-lives-matter equivalent of a municipal Gaza ceasefire resolution. We need so much more than that to support a statement that doesn't end up feeling like a vacuous attempt to close a book and force it closed. As it stands, I'd recommend Urbana just pass a resolution that declares Urbana digs peace, since it is probably about as simple and communicative case about the same sense of urgency to our government. I fear that we've lost track of why a resolution even matters. Right now, it feels imperative that we just continue to demand to the government, over and over, demand as strongly as we possible can, possibly can, to apply any and all measures to achieve a ceasefire, which includes immediately halting the delivery of weapons to Israel that are being used with the intention to starve, torture, and erase an entire population. This is what we can act on. If the resolution does not have that, it is not a useful resolution. The current resolution is unacceptable. I'm hopeful that we might still collectively find what I consider basic ethical principles being communicated as strongly as possible from our city to the powers that be.
It's alarming when I hear MSNBC correspondents, Democratic senators, and the liberals who listen to them use similar language as Republicans, including the use of the word, quote-unquote, "invasion" when talking about immigration. They've completely conceded to and accepted the Republican framing on the issue, and we can see this with the Biden administration's continued construction of the Trump border wall, as well expanding, as expanding the budget for the US Border Patrol and Immigration and Customs Enforcement. They have legitimized and normalized the xenophobic, white-nativist agenda of the Republican Party. This reminds me of another domain that they frequently agree with Republicans on, foreign policy. Over the past several months, the Biden administration has continued to support a far-right wing government abroad, a white supremacist regime that is hell-bent on creating a theocratic ethno-state. That state is the state of Israel. The Biden administration has continued the American policy of giving billions of dollars to Israel, and American weapons corporations continue to profit off the weapons that the US sends to Israel so that they can continue their campaign of genocide and ethnic cleansing. It's unbelievable how Democrats are able to capitulate to Republicans on the fake issue of an invasion at the border, but when there's a literal invasion incurring, when people are actually being murdered, having their land stolen, and their homes stolen and demolished, they're willing to give billions of dollars not to the Palestinian people, who have endured this violence for over 70 years, but to the colonizing force that is committing a genocide. People have a right to resist when they are victim to this sort of violence. The only thing I condemn is the state of Israel, the American government, and those who weaponize Jewish trauma in order to justify colonial violence in Palestine. So, we give billions of dollars in support of a genocidal colonial project. Meanwhile, at home, bloodthirsty Republicans screech about a non-existent invasion and migrant crime, and Democrats are willing to capitulate to the Republicans on the issue. This is money that we could use not on bombs, but affordable housing, schools, and healthcare. I have increasingly become more and more disillusioned with the Democratic Party as they begin to resemble Republicans on more issues. What are the reasons that people should support Democrats when all they do is offer hollow, performative politics and Band-Aid reforms to urgent issues? They're not even willing to offer a small gesture of solidarity, a ceasefire resolution, to those who oppose a genocide that's happening right now. So, why should people support the liberals? The only reason that liberals can muster is that they're not as bad as the Republicans. That's woefully insufficient. Democrats need to offer substantive, material benefits to people. People need to put pressure on Democrats in order to extract these concessions, because the Democrats are not willing to do what's right to begin with. We don't want your, quote-unquote, "peace resolution," which is not, which does not call for a ceasefire after six months of genocide. We want an immediate and permanent ceasefire.
Hello, my name is Jared, and I wanted to speak today because I believe this is city business, and the, the newest statement omitting the phrase ceasefire, you know, makes it not worth it to pass, because, you know, I remember when I wasn't always a supporter of the Palestinian people. I used to believe that, hey, Israel is the best because it's another America, right? You know, maybe there are lots of other people who are naive as I was when I was younger and used to come to meetings like this. But what changed my mind was not any new facts, but the principles that actually determined how I saw any facts. My statement doesn't appeal to any new facts, but only to the principle that, of you and your better judgment. The resolution for a ceasefire is worth every effort, even in the strictly symbolic measure, because everyone can identify with the cause of condemning war as immoral, the cause of putting an end to killing. As a student here at the U of I, I remember reading Plato and Socrates when he said to his judges who sentenced him to death, "If you think that by killing men, you can prevent someone from censuring your evil lives, you are mistaken. That is not a way of escaping, which is either possible or honorable, the easiest and noblest ways to not be disabling to others, but to improve yourselves." And maybe we can improve that statement today with the word ceasefire involved. Instead of continuing to defend the war of Israel, turn to the law, and do not be so afraid of these leaders and armies that you turn away from your own better judgment. The lesson is biblical, too. I remember reading the, in the New Testament, the advice of Gamaliel. From the Acts of the Apostles, he says, "I tell you, do not take any action against these men. Leave them alone." We've been told about Hamas, about Palestinians. If this plan and work of theirs is a man-made thing, it will disappear. But if it comes from God, you cannot possibly defeat them. You could find yourselves fighting against God. It is up to you to pass a resolution. Learn from that advice in your own Bible at home. The message is for you, still stuck identifying with the state of Israel, don't be afraid of the Palestinian people. Their aspiration is a national one, the nation of a people without a state. There is nothing more natural than the resistance of the oppressed. Every Christian and Jew and Muslim knows the difference between Moses and the Pharaoh, between the oppressor and the oppressed. Between the two, as Paulo Freire wrote, "There is no symmetry. It is not the despise to initiate hatred, but those who despise." The overwhelming sense that we must be experts before we come-- The overwhelming sense that we must be experts before we come up here is really the main barrier to any standing up and speaking out. And the discourse from a place of knowing basically reinforces the civilizing mission for Israel, which is mostly a myth. Thank you for your time today.
Hello. My name is Timothy Chen, and I'm a Urbana resident. Before moving to Urbana, I was a resident of New Orleans, Louisiana, for 22 years. I mention this as I would like to call to attention a serious tragedy that occurred earlier this year. On January 20th, it was reported by the Associated Press that a 17-year-old American teenager from New Orleans, Louisiana, named Tafik Ajak passed away in the occupied West Bank territory after being shot in the head and chest by either an Israeli off-duty officer or Israeli soldier. If any known terrorist organization had killed an American citizen in this conflict, it would be the biggest headline of the decade and grounds for immediate mobilization. But right now, as it stands, an American citizen was murdered by an Israeli militant, and the United States has not done much other than to say that they are investigating. I believe at bare minimum, we should all be fighting for a permanent ceasefire so that we may respect the life and loss of a fellow American citizen, and for me, a fellow New Orleanian, and for all of my best friends and brothers, my closest friends, a fellow Palestinian, now martyr, and we must also respect the lives and loss of everyone else in the conflict, which seems to only escalate by day. I do not believe for one moment that this city council does not have responsibility to take action when American tax dollars contribute to the death of tens of thousands of people, including now, American citizens. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Sabrina Felenger, and I am a current university student and a proud member of the Jewish community. I am here today to speak in favor of the current resolution on the table. Many unverified claims have been made here today, but I want to discuss the truth. Voting for a ceasefire or any resolution pressuring a country thousands of miles away does not change anything here. Instead, it makes Jewish students feel unsafe on campus and is worming its way into our learning. Theater history, Greco-Roman mythology, statistics, these classes should have nothing to do with this war, and yet students find themselves fielding offhand comments. And this is not to mention the fact that I personally know of several instances of antisemitism on campus. Students should not be avoiding their main quad so they can escape harassment from their peers. But this discussion is happening here, and I think it is important to discuss our values here in Urbana. As a community, we should condemn the ongoing rape and sexual assault of Israeli hostages still in Hamas captivity. The war could end tomorrow if Hamas surrendered and released all our hostages, but they have reiterated their intent to destroy Israel, even putting Palestinian lives on the line. On top of this, I find it disgusting furthering any of this talk here with people using violent language like "from the river to the sea" and insulting Zionists, which over 90% of Jews identify as. Before I finish, I want to touch on the fact that I witnessed here and now a group of Jewish students being harassed as they left the building. I know I am welcoming the same by standing up here, but it is time to prove that the Jewish population will not be bullied into silence anymore. I urge you to think about the generations to come. Do you want your children learning how a terrorist organization was supported over and over and over again? Or do you want them to learn the fact that people finally stood up and faced what was put in front of them? Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Maxwell Haynes, and I'm a resident of Urbana, and I am really disheartened by the actions of the council, in particular, you, Diane. In the last few months, and especially the last week, you have been divisive by avoiding your responsibility and claiming neutrality. But I would like to remind you that there is no neutrality in the time of injustice. Palestinians have been subject to countless crimes against humanity over the last 75 years at the hands of the Israeli state, controlled by a Zionist party that is hell-bent on white supremacy and settler colonialism. You know this. I know this, and for everyone else in the room, I'm sure they know it, too. The difference is that for some reason, some of you believe that this violence is justified when it's against people of color. That I will never understand, and history will not look kindly upon the actions of people like you. I believe that the only option for our city council is to vote upon the original ceasefire resolution Ben graciously wrote and proposed on January 8th. This new slap-in-the-face-of-a-resolution that has been introduced does not even meet the needs of community or even contain the word "ceasefire," you know, the thing that we have all been calling for. But this is, of course, no surprise. You, Diane, you chose to assign the task of a new resolution to someone who has known ties to the IDF and has publicly advocated against a ceasefire in the past. This so-called peace resolution was formed without input from any of us that have been working on the ground advocating for a ceasefire and for Palestinian rights through our countless actions. We are not difficult to find. You know who we are. Urbana has a diverse group of community members call upon, the majority of which support a real ceasefire resolution. Diane, you have deliberately brushed us off at best and at worst smeared our friends' images by insinuating that they were somehow antisemitic for supporting a ceasefire. The entire process you have chosen has been unfair, anti-democratic, and Islamophobic. These behaviors need to change at all levels of government, starting here. Violence will continue until we have a lasting peace and an end to this apartheid that has been going on for almost a century. Take the first step in voting for a real ceasefire resolution, the one Ben introduced in January, not this one-sided dismissal. Diane, again, you have not been acting like a leader, and you have not been representing your constituents. I, along with most of the room and most of the people outside, feel that you are only representing the constituents that you agree with, and that, in my opinion, is morally bankrupt. A true leader advocates for all voices in their community and does through a lens of justice and humility, not one of dismissal and partisanship. Step up, for the love of God, step up. I'm so ashamed of you and your behaviors, and I'm so sorry that you are the leader that we are stuck with right now in a time when we need our leaders to be on the right side of history. How many more weeks, Diane? How many more?
Hello. I'm Yasmeen. I'm a resident of Champaign-Urbana, and I'm not going to do much talking, using my own words today. I'm going to use Israel's words and let you make that judgment of what you should be doing right now. Okay? Let's start with the Minister of Heritage, who said, "There are no noncombatants in Gaza. A nuclear attack on Gaza is an option." Hmm. What about the former Minister of Public Diplomacy and member of the Knesset? "Erase all of Gaza from the face of the earth, that the Gazan monsters will fly to the southern fence and try to enter Egyptian territory, or they will die and their death will be evil." Hmm. Another member of the Knesset. Right now, one goal: Nakba, the Palestinian catastrophe of 1948, that will overshadow the Nakba of 1948. Another justice minister. "Behind every terrorist stand dozens of men and children, without whom he could not engage in terrorism. They are all enemy combatants, and their blood shall be all on their heads." Now, this also includes the mothers of the martyrs, who sent them to hell with flowers and kisses. They should follow their sons. Nothing would be more just. They should go, as should the physical homes in which they raised the snakes. Otherwise, more little snakes will be raised there. And finally, the President of Israel. "There are no innocent civilians in Gaza. It is an entire nation out there that is responsible." If that's not genocide, then what is? If that doesn't show genocidal intent, then what does? And their actions testify to that. To reiterate what some of my peers have said, but using a different example, if a school shooter was using kids as human shields, or school shooters were embedded all throughout the school, would it be justified to bomb the school or to kill the school shooters? Absolutely not. So why is this different for Palestinian children? Why is this different for Palestinian civilians? How dare all of you, all of you? And to just comment on what one of the last speakers said, a country across the world has nothing to do with us, but then continues to talk about how she hates Hamas and Israel and giving her opinion, obviously, it is affecting you, and that's why we should be talking about it here. It's affecting us as well, and it's massacring our families. So speak up and call for a permanent, immediate ceasefire.
And with that, public comment is closed. It's been two hours, and the rules say two hours of public comment. So thank you, everyone, for your input. We'll move on with our agenda. Next item is--
Will there be an opportunity for those of us in line to speak?
I'm sorry, but our rules say there is two hours of public input.
We will be back.
Public input can still be submitted via--
Ceasefire now!
Excuse me?
Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now! Ceasefire now!
Public input can still be submitted in writing through the adjournment of the meeting as well.
You can take your chanting out of the chamber so we can continue conducting city business. If you can be quiet so we can continue conducting city business. Okay, we're going to recess for 10 minutes.
I grabbed the mic just because I needed to do something.
Do we want them to leave? They can make them leave?
No.
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 We're going to restart right now.
Do we have to do a motion? Is it a motion?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to come out of recess.
Move that we come out of recess.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we are back to the agenda. Next item is staff report.
I have nothing.
Okay, moving on to new business. First item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024-03-011, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 7 Omnibus.
I'll be making this, I'll be making this presentation tonight because Elizabeth couldn't be with us this evening. So there are a number of items in this omnibus budget amendment. The first one is to transfer $149,000 from the general fund to the equipment services fund to pay for repairs to the ladder truck in the fire department. The second is for a transfer of funds of $135,000 to go towards the completion of the Main Street Brick Arch Storm Sewer Project. We, in a, in the sanitary sewer fund, there was a project for sanitary sewer televising that was $50,000 under budget. And so we'd like to move that money towards the sanitary sewer lining program. And for those two items, John Zeeman is here if you have follow-up questions. And he could probably answer any questions you have about this fourth one, too, which is to transfer $190,000 from the CDBG fund to help pay for some additional costs associated with the equity and quality of life projects, $120,000 for sidewalks, and $70,000 for streetlights. And I will attempt to answer any questions you have that John can't answer.
Are there any questions, Chris?
Got a green light. Boraima, can you turn up the mics? I hear me.
Just real quick, what's the address for the sidewalks and lights?
John's going to get that one.
Yeah, so for the EQL projects, I forget whether there's 11 or 12 locations. This is, the additional money is for the sidewalks, not at one specific location, but across the board. There's, there were some considerations in some of the projects such as side needing some curb and gutter to go along with the sidewalk that wasn't included with the budget, and that's part of the additional funds for the sidewalk. Street lighting, we found that the street lighting in the Geraldine Highland neighborhood, the existing street lighting was a good candidate for replacement because the cables are direct burial, which is not a, definitely not an ideal condition. I mean, they're not in conduit. And so we opted to add that. It's not really part of the EQL project, but it's an opportunity for us to use community development block grant funds to upgrade the lighting while we're in that neighborhood.
Are there any more questions? Mary Alice.
So if I remember correctly, we bought a new ladder truck about four years ago, roughly speaking?
Yes.
And what is the lifespan of a ladder truck? Is it 10, 15, 20 years now that the-
I think it's 15 to 20 years, but Chief Date is coming in. He's multitasking big time tonight. The question is, what's- What is the lifespan of a fire, of a ladder truck?
Currently, what we have in a VERF now is like 15 years. We've looked to have that adjusted. Those are, those are based off of national numbers, you know, from all fire departments. And right now, the call volume for our department is not really allowing us to see 15 years.
If I remember correctly, I think we paid $1.2 million for the ladder truck, roughly speaking.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess my, we use the VERF funding to bank money so that we can buy these larger pieces of equipment. Is it something that we should be, because $150,000 more is a big number.
Yes.
So should, are we going to be changing the VERF funding for the vehicles?
That's in consideration right now. Yes, looking at that and making sure we have the proper estimates on replacements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions? Okay. Yeah, I didn't, yes, Mary Alice.
I will make a motion that we move ordinance number 2024-03-011, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 7 Omnibus. City Council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by James. That ordinance number 2024-03-011, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 7 Omnibus. We'll move on to City Council with recommendation for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, discussion, thank you.
I forget, too.
Any discussion? None, okay.
Thank you, I'll get set.
Yeah, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2024-03-012, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, maintaining the number of Class GC liquor licenses for Trune Beverages, Inc., doing business as Atkins Golf Club at the University of Illinois, 2600 Stone Creek Boulevard in Urbana.
Acting as the local liquor commissioner, I'm recommending approval of this liquor license for Trune Beverages. This is the company that's going to be taking over the food service, food and beverage service at the Stone Creek Golf Club. They'll be replacing the previous business that was there. So we're not actually increasing the number of liquor licenses in Urbana, but they are asking for the Class GC, which is a golf course liquor license.
Okay, are there any questions? James.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2024-03-012, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, maintaining the number of Class GC liquor licenses for Trune Beverages Incorporated, doing business as Atkins Golf Club, the University of Illinois, 2600 Stone Creek Boulevard, Urbana, to City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by James and seconded by Mary Alice. That ordinance number 2024-03-012, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, maintaining the number of Class GC liquor licenses for Trune Beverages, Inc., doing business as Atkins Golf Club at the University of Illinois, 2600 Stone Creek Boulevard in Urbana, on to City Council for approval. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2024-03-013, an ordinance vacating a street and alley, North Cottage Grove Avenue and East West Alley between Hickory Street and North Cottage Grove Avenue, both north of East Park Street.
Good evening. Okay, so another couple of vacations here. Kind of step into this, so let me skip ahead in these slides, get the map first. So as you may remember, we had a public hearing held on February 19th for the street right-of-way vacation. We're oriented here on Cottage Grove on the west side of Ambux Park, north of University Avenue. So what is being proposed is to vacate a street, a segment of street right-of-way, north, the north terminus of Cottage Grove Avenue, as well as an adjacent alley that runs west from there, both being, you know, not used for public use at this time, or have been for some time. So we had the public hearing for the street as required by city code. There was no comments received at that time, back on the 19th. Also, all properties within 250 feet were notified in advance by mail. And I just wanted to add, because some of that wasn't stated in the council packet. But, yes, and so we're asking for passage of this ordinance for the vacation. You know, the section of Cottage Grove Avenue is solely used by the UCSD, the sanitary district, as an entrance for their northeast plant. The east-west alley is an unpaved and unused grass area that is used by the adjoining residential properties currently. The, kind of the surveying plat, details of this is the way the land was subdivided originally. All of the property is going to go, all the property for the alleys in the rainbow colors there on the screen are going to go to the southern neighboring properties. And then the vacation of the street is going to all go to the western, the property to the west of it. That's just by the nature of the wind. When they were subdivided, the alley, the right-of-way was not taken from the properties to the north and to the east. So we're returning it to the properties where they came from originally, or the land they came from originally. Yeah, here's some quick visuals of these. Looking at the valley, alley on the left-hand side and the street on the right-hand side. And so it's with, a lot of our vacations, we're just removing the potential burden of maintenance, potential cost for maintenance activities in these sections that don't serve a public use. And any questions from council?
Mary Alice.
Hi, so help refresh my memory here. I know that we had a conversation at another property in which we vacated a street because it only went to one residence or one, one business, right? And so it was more of a driveway instead of a street.
That's right.
Right?
Yeah.
This is, seems to be a similar situation in some regards with the street vacation. Would you say that that's correct?
I would, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Grace.
Thank you, just a few more clarifying questions here. Also with some other cases in the past, this is, the city owns these parcels. It's not right-of-way access on property that someone else already owns, is that right? The city actually owns these ones and we are adding to the parcel of the existing property owners?
That's correct, yes. The right-of-way is currently land that is owned by the city of Urbana, and when we vacate it, it will become part of the neighboring property's owner's property, expand the size of their property, yes.
And I saw we had some things in here of support. Is that, is you weren't able to reach all of them?
They didn't respond within the time allowed, yeah.
And then as far as utility access, you just educated us in general, like I saw some of those utility lines on there in this area. Does, you know, for example, if Ameren owns and operates those, do they still have utility access after we vacate this right-of-way?
Yes, because we are setting it up with a general utility easement within the alley, the, what would be the former alley. And so that's something, that's an administrative thing we need to do before we do the vacation is we set up these easements. Because that exists within a right-of-way without an easement. You take away the right-of-way, now you need an easement for the utilities. Including us, we have a utility that runs along there. It's probably about four utilities who are going to be party to that easement along the alley there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have questions?
No, but I'll make a motion.
Please.
All right. I will move ordinance number 2024-03-013, ordinance vacating a street and alley on the wide, wide North Cottage Grove Avenue and wide, huh?
Not wide, four, here's the echo. Both sides.
Okay. Let's see here. Alley between Hickory Street and North Cottage Grove Avenue, both north of East Park Street. Is that right? Okay, all right. On the consent agenda to the next city council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Sharice. That ordinance number 2024-03-013, an ordinance vacating a street and alley, North Cottage Grove Avenue, and east-west alley between Hickory Street and North Cottage Grove Avenue, both north of East Park Street, on to City Council on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And all opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Next item is resolution number 20, thank you, John. Next item is resolution number 2024-03-012R, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement for residential electronics waste collection. Oh, could you turn, make sure your mic is on?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm seeking approval of the intergovernmental agreement for two 2024 electronics recycling collection events. The city of Urbana has partnered with Champaign County, City of Champaign, and the Village of Savoy to conduct semi-annual electronics recycling collection events since the early 2010s. Costs are divided by relative population and the city of Urbana's cost share is 18.6%. The maximum cost share in 2022, 2024 for two electronics recycling collection events is up to $8,658.30 for the city of Urbana.
Okay, quick and easy, thank you. Are there any questions, Mary Alice?
And you might not know the answer to this, but I remember back in the ARPA days that we were, they were talking about doing a hazardous collection site in the county. If that site is built, does this go away? And then all the electronic equipment goes to that new facility?
I don't think they've determined that yet. I think it would start off as just a household hazardous waste facility, but they, they would like to eventually incorporate electronics into that facility. So that's, could be a possibility in the future.
Do you know where that stands in the process?
They are actually working with an architectural firm as we speak. And so I think we're hoping in the next two years, there could be a facility built, possibly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
James.
Yeah, and if you could confirm for, for me and for the public, a number of the recycling companies in town will take electronic waste, smaller electronic waste for no cost still, right?
There's a couple electronics recycling or scrap metal recyclers and retailers that will take electronics for-
Not, not big TVs or tube TVs or things like that, but the, the smaller things that you need to get rid of. You can do that basically for free with, with recyclers, correct?
For the most part, for the tube TVs, there still is not a place to take those, only for our electronics events that we conduct.
Yeah.
And flat-screen TVs, there might be a few places that, if they're like, still in usable condition, that will be able to accept those, perhaps Goodwill or Salt and Light, but you'd have to check with them to see if they'll still accept those, if they're still in working condition.
Yeah, I don't want to imply that we don't need this because we need this for the TVs and the bigger things, but people have other alternatives. They don't have to wait for these two events.
That is correct. And both Urbana and even Champaign, we both have our Where Do I Recycle It guide online. So if folks want to look at where to take certain items, like smaller items, cell phones or other electronics, they can reference those guides to, to figure out where to take those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sharice, did you have a question, too?
Yes, I'm sorry, I guess, I guess the question I have is that with all this recycling, where does it go?
Well-
Does it, does it, because we don't have a permanent place, you know, in the city of Urbana or Champaign, so where does it go?
Are you referencing electronics recycling or just general recycling from-
Electronics.
Electronics. We work with a contractor that's contracted through the Illinois EPA and approved through the EPA. And they manage all of our electronics waste through a statewide program. So they, they haven't, they oversee all of that. And so much of it is disassembled in the states or in Illinois, actually. There's a facility up in Joliet where they take the material and, and the components are recycled. And some of that, that's in good condition or things like Apple products. Sometimes they refurbish that and then resell that, that online for, for profit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Grace.
Thank you. Courtney, thank you so much for coming to talk to us here. Other side question for the public for when that time comes, could you remind us, do people have to register for this recycling event, electronics recycling?
Electronic, yes. So typically about a month before we have our events, our first event will be in May this year. So usually in early April, we'll have an open registration online. So if folks go to the Urbana general main website, there'll be a link that we'll have up for people to register through.
Thank you. And you mentioned this contractor, this A-Team recyclers, they are, I guess, in collaboration with Illinois EPA, did you say? And is, the next question then would be, is there any kind of funding subsidy? Like I thought we were on a waitlist and that it might be some kind of financial contribution. Are we paying for it all?
Actually, the manufacturers, there's a, there's a law in Illinois that came into effect, I believe it was in 2012, don't quote me. But the manufacturers pay for electro, the actual recycling of the electronics, the processing and recycling of the electronic devices. So the cities and our communities and the county, we just pay for the transportation costs essentially and some miscellaneous costs as well, but mainly just the transport costs at this point. So the manufacturers are required to pay for their processing and recycling costs of, of all the electronics that are, are collected.
Great, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Go ahead, Grace.
I would make a motion of, would move on the consent agenda, resolution number 2024-03-012R, resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement for like, residential electronics waste collection.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Grace and seconded by Sharice. That resolution number 2024-03-12R, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement for residential electronics waste collection. Be moved to City Council for approval on the consent agenda. Any discussion? None? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. All right, last item is resolution number 2024-03-013R, a resolution calling for the end of the Gaza war and a lasting peace. I believe you wanted to say something.
Yes, thank. The council's asked to consider passage of the attached resolution, calls for an end to the war in Gaza and promotion of steps toward a just and lasting peace. For several weeks, members of the local community have expressed deep concern regarding the ongoing war between Hamas and Israel. It's resulted in devastating loss of life and destruction of public infrastructure. We acknowledge this conflict impacts the well-being of local Muslim, Jewish, Israeli, Palestinian communities, as well as any other Urbana residents. I want to summarize how we got to this point and clear up some misunderstandings that I've heard tonight and in the past. In early January, a member of the public was invited to give a presentation before the city council. Two city council members have that right, according to our rules, to invite presentations to be given. You saw one tonight with the Alice presentation. We've had them on many different topics. The topic of that presentation was a proposed ceasefire resolution. It was brought to council before anyone else had seen a copy of it or had read the resolution. I'm not sure whether the sponsors of the presentation had actually read it either. But it was clear, once the content of the resolution was read into the record during public input, that the reaction from much of the community and a lot of the community was stunned, shocking, and they were very hurt. The content of that resolution was extremely hurtful and frankly, one-sided. And no one had seen it before it was introduced into this body. The fact that it did not get onto the agenda speaks volumes. Normally, when, when council members sponsor a presentation like that or work with someone, you expect them to then continue to work with someone who brings a resolution like that and actually ask to have it added to a city council agenda. People for weeks came and talked to us as if there was something on the agenda for us to vote on, and there wasn't. It was never brought to be, proposed to be added to the agenda by the council members who originally brought it up to this body. So here we are. Couple of weeks ago, or maybe three weeks ago now, a member, another member of the public stood up here during public input, gave out his personal email, invited the public to come together and work on a joint resolution. This came from the community. No one assigned Mr. Stav Ashul to this task. No one asked him to do this. He did it on his own. He stood up and invited anyone who wanted to, to meet, to discuss. Yes, it's polarizing, yes, it's painful, yes, people had many different viewpoints and passionately different opinions, but they were given the opportunity to meet, to talk, one-on-one in a small group. A number of people took Mr. Ashul up on that invitation. I don't know, and most of us don't know, who all participated in the meeting that took place, that was at the Urbana library. I know of two people now because they've self-identified in addition to Mr. Ashul, but frankly, I don't think any of us know who the rest of them are. And they will not be identified unless they choose to do so. But again, everyone had the opportunity to join in that group. It was a small step, but it was a very significant step considering no one had stepped up to do anything in the intervening weeks since that first resolution was offered. I know that the people who came to the library with that meeting had differing opinions, they had differing viewpoints, similar to what we've heard over the past few weeks in this chamber. They came with personal lists of must-haves. They all came with opinions of what they thought was incredibly important to, to put in a statement coming from the Urbana city council. And most importantly, they brought with them their personal experiences, their perspective, their history, and their personal and direct connections to this horrible conflict between Israel and Hamas. And no one is disputing that. It's horrible. It's painful, and we cry for that. And I also know that the folks who met in that small group came with a desire to find words that would address the pain that has been expressed right here in this council chamber, week after week. And they all acknowledged there are deep divisions and there are some stark and absolutely, I think, unresolvable differences in opinion about what short-term steps should be taken in that conflict. So this group, to their credit, chose to focus their words on areas of common ground that have emerged over the past few weeks. And as we sat here, week after week, listening, and we have listened, we have listened every single week to every single person who has spoken. Some certain themes, some areas of common ground emerged. And it all began with this group with a wealth, a concern for the well-being of the entire community. Not people with a personal stake in this conflict, not people who are passionately concerned, but for the well-being of this entire community. And we, as elected officials, that is our responsibility first and foremost. So the proposed wording of the resolution that you have in front of you tonight is a result of conversation, collaboration, and compromise. Nobody's happy with it, I can tell you that. I've heard from a lot of people and nobody's happy with it, which is actually a very good sign, because it means we have heard people, we have tried to put into this resolution words that we knew and feelings and ideas that we know are important, but it's not going to satisfy everybody. And this resolution grew out of the common ground that was found in that group. And again, people had the opportunity to participate. Those of you who have come every week, you heard the invitation, and if you weren't here, you knew it was extended. So I personally, before the council begins discussion of this, I'd like to sincerely thank Stav Ashul and the members of the community who probably will remain unidentified forever. At least you came together to talk. Thank you.
Questions, James?
I, I'd actually like to put a motion on the floor so we can go straight to discussion, because I think, I don't know if there's a lot of questions. I'd, I'd wait for people to ask questions if they want to, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead, is there a prerogative?
I move resolution number 2024-03-013R, a resolution calling for the end of the Gaza war and a lasting peace, as, as put in front of us. And if I could speak a little bit to my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by James and seconded by Mary Alice, that resolution number 2024-03-013R, resolution calling for the end of the Gaza war and a lasting peace, be moved on, be moved on to city council with the recommendation for approval. And you have?
Yeah, not for consent.
Yeah, and you have words?
So I, I just wanted to say, I wanted to get this on, on for discussion, because I think it's time we need to talk about this and, and move these things forward. I will, I will point out that I have been here for all of these sessions and I have, I've listened to everyone. And I have been coming together, trying to put together in my mind what the city of Urbana could say together. And that's a really challenging thing in this, in this particular circumstance. And in, in that, in that process, there are things that aren't in here that I would put, definitely put in there. I would definitely want to hold the leaders accountable for innocent civilians who have died in this conflict. That is something I would, I like to see in here. And when I say leaders, I'm talking about all, all the leaders that are responsible for what, what's been going on from October 7th throughout. But it's not in there. And I'm, and I'm going to have to live with that, because that is not something that we could get 60% of Urbana folks to agree on, is what I, is what I've been hearing. I will also point out that after we had a couple of these sessions, the rabbi from Sinai Temple came and talked to us and said, this is the first I've learned about this. And I would talk to someone about this. And at that, that was like six weeks ago, seven weeks ago. And so, you know, the, the call for conversation to find common ground is not two weeks ago. In fact, four weeks ago, I sat here and I said, I'm looking for people in the community to talk about this and bring us a common voice that we could vote on to say, this represents what Urbana wants to say about this. I know Urbana wants to ask for peace. I know Urbana wants to call for aid. I know Urbana wants people held as hostages or unjustly to be released. I, I, I believe that, these things are in here. And so I'm willing to support this as it stands, but I do feel it's time for us as a group to have a conversation about that. And I, I welcome it and look forward to it.
Chris.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I would like to make a motion to amend resolution number 2024-03-013R in the following manner, amendment that would change the second resolve to say the following. Call for just and lasting peace between Israel and Palestine, starting with an immediate and permanent ceasefire by both Israel and Hamas, along with delivery of urgently needed humanitarian aid to Gaza as necessary step. In that process, adding the words, starting with an immediate and permanent ceasefire by both Israel and Hamas.
Second.
Okay, an amendment has been put forth to resolution number 2024-03-013R, resolution calling for the end of the Gaza war and lasting peace, to the tune of start, starting with an immediate and permanent ceasefire by both Israel and Hamas. Is there a discussion? Mary Alice? Mary Alice?
All right, okay. Well, I, I've taken some time, quite a bit of time actually, to think about everything that's going on. I very rarely write something, but I did write my thoughts down so I could get them all out here. So I was going to read it during the original discussion, but I think it is, now it's appropriate. So I personally have an eclectic religious background. My grandfather was a minister for Congregationalist Church. My father's a Quaker. My mother's a Swedenborgan, and my godmother was Jewish. As a child, I both attended synagogue and church. I learned that no one religion can claim that they are only the good people. Using a person's religion as a sole determination of their virtue is indefensible. To that end, I condemn both antisemitism and Islamophobia. Since January, we've had a lot of public input regarding the Israel-Hamas war. As many people have mentioned, the Urbana city council has no say in the international conflicts. But it is apparent to me that many Urbana residents are suffering due to this war. There is deep division within our community on what the council should or should not do. The fact that I've received over 700 emails, probably closer to about 1,000 now, about this topic with multiple viewpoints, only emphasizes the division we have seen during council meetings. I have received many emails just for tonight's agenda item. Many people agree with what most of it says. Some people have suggestions on how to alter the resolution. Some people have been concerned about the word ceasefire is not in the resolution. My understanding of what the word ceasefire is, is that it is temporary ending of a conflict. Even calling it a permanent ceasefire indicates the acceptance of a continuing war between Israel and Palestine. Adding ceasefire into the resolution is supporting the status quo. I want the war to end. I want Palestinians and Israelis to live in peace in their own country. At the end of the day, I hope that the vast majority of Urbana citizens can agree that peace is what we want between Israel and Palestine. I will move to vote this on to city council with the recommendation for approval. And that is my statement.
Chris?
Thank you. I would also like to clarify or clear up misunderstandings, as the mayor says, of my intentions and thoughts in sponsoring an original version. Originally, Chris and I had requested a council discussion that would involve a short presentation, some kind of recommendation or request, and then council discussion. And was hoping, in my mind, we would have had a collaborative community discussion that I think the issue was jumping into worrying about an exact version, because as the mayor said in clarifying, there wasn't a proposed version set out originally. I think it was open-ended. I think that the one that was offered was a helpful start and also did have the support of over 1,000 residents that we just got a signed petition from today. So I think that by jumping in and saying it was one-sided and then swinging in with this other version that is arguably even more one-sided, I think is not, not the, my view on things. I also don't agree with saying that no one else did anything to help out with this. There were completely new groups that were formed and organized about this issue here locally. There have been people who have been organizing by the hundreds around this issue locally here, people who've been signing petitions. And I think that's a disservice to say that no one did anything except for someone who gave out their email publicly. I've heard from people who I've heard from, from Muslim Action Committee and Jews for Ceasefire, who were not invited or involved in this new drafting. I did email Stav and I did appreciate that point of contact in making the effort to try and facilitate a community conversation. I didn't know that this drafting was happening. I did email, I wasn't invited. I imagine maybe Stav didn't think that I would want to know or saying that it would be a community that I might not want to be involved. But I didn't know anything about it. I didn't see anywhere where it was announced, here at a meeting or publicly. We've heard that it was an open invitation. I have never saw an invitation. There was an email requested to do. I didn't know when or where it was happening. No, there, I do not know of any open invitation for this revision. I think that there have been groups connecting together, and I still support a true, meaningful community conversation on this topic and an agreed version. However, it seems like that might not be feasible, both logistically or emotionally at this point. So due to multiple time constraints and lots of reasons, I support the amendments to this resolution tonight, although it's not perfect. I think that we absolutely need to acknowledge the current humanitarian crisis going on and include the language that actually includes ceasefire if we are to compromise on passing this here sooner rather than later.
Is there any more? Any more discussion on the amendment? James?
Yeah, I, I want to follow up and maybe echo some of Mary Alice's comments. One, one thing that I've heard consistently throughout this conversation is a lack of belief in what a ceasefire means. So Chris, I would ask you to maybe talk about why you think adding permanent ceasefire to this makes a difference from, you know, past ceasefires? That why is it different from calling for a lasting peace as opposed to a pause in violence? It may be a first step, but it is, it is not, it, we've gone through a number of ceasefires that have not persisted. There have been ceasefires that have been proposed that haven't been accepted. I'd just like to know a little bit about your mind about why it's important to differentiate that from a lasting peace.
I'm calling, what I'm asking, what everyone's asking is a permanent ceasefire. So like you cease to fire things at people. You can't, you can't, you can't call for peace and then say, oh, well, go ahead and keep dropping your bombs or keep, you know, killing children. And I, and I, and I've asked for both Hamas and Israel to knock it the hell off. That's what I'm asking for, or all, everybody's asking for.
I, I can agree with that. I can agree with knock it the hell off. But I, but you have to understand that ceasefire in this conversation is not considered genuine in some circumstances. Lasting peace means not stopping for six months and then starting again.
I'm not, I said, what does it say? I mean, immediate and permanent ceasefire.
How is that different from lasting peace?
What, why are, why would you not want permanent ceasefire as in stop using violence?
I would, I would totally support a call for cessation of violence. An end of violence. You want to put it that way? That's great. I would support that.
James, that's what ceasefire means. I, I don't...
That's not what ceasefire has meant in the past.
I'm not debating... I'm not debating politics, or military strategy, or any of that stuff. I'm talking about the cessation of violence, permanently cease firing your bombs, your planes, your guns, all of it.
Okay, so are you suggesting amendment to the amendment with cessation? Or are you? The motion on the table-
I would sign on to cessation of violence permanently, yes.
Is that a formal motion?
Yeah, I can't amend-
You can't amend the amendment?
I thought you could have a friendly amendment.
You can have friendly amendments, and I believe that you can also amend amendments. But we have to discuss them individually, and they have to be voted individually. So it gets messy if you are amending an amendment. So friendly amendments are preferred, for clarity.
So do we want to then vote on the current amendment on the floor, then?
Are you calling the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it sounds like we're- Calling the question on the amendment. So it's Resolution Number 2024-03-013R, Resolution calling for the end of the Gaza War and lasting peace with the amendment of adding to Number Two, "Starting with an immediate and permanent ceasefire by both Israel and Hamas." Do we do, it could be voice, or?
You can do voice, but if there is confusion about vote, then you can, we can do roll?
Let's do a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Wu?
No.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
No.
Councilmember Bishop?
No.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Coisenberry?
No.
Okay, that amendment is disposed of. James?
I would propose an amendment that is equivalent to what Chris proposed, using the language "permanent cessation of violence" instead.
So to clarify for records, the only change you're making to the previous proposed amendment is permanent cessation of violence, is that correct?
Can you state your whole?
Yeah, the part that's in yellow on this sheet would read, "Starting with an immediate and permanent cessation of violence" by both Israel and Hamas.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved by James and seconded by Mary Alice that an amendment to the words of "starting with an immediate and permanent cessation of violence by both Israel and Hamas" to be added to Number Two. Is there any discussion? Chris?
James, could you clarify what you see as the distinction or benefit here? I don't think I understand that yet.
I can tell you, it's what I just said a couple times. I think that there has been a history of ceasefire not leading to a permanent outcome. And so there's a skepticism about what ceasefire means in this circumstance. It's a loaded term in this conversation, and I've heard it over the past eight weeks. It's loaded for a lot of people. And if Chris agrees that it's, that I'm describing the same thing when we talk about knocking it the hell off, which is a permanent cessation of violence, we're not getting into that question of whether it's another ceasefire that's going to fail later.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
I'm just going to kind of give back on both of what you were saying, because I actually prefer, rather than ceasefire, prefer permanent cessation of violence, because the violence that is happening over there is not just dropping bombs, it's not just babies getting killed. There are actually neighbors fighting each other, and people trying to remove others from their homes, and so on and so forth. And that is a violent act as well. And coming from the background that I come from, with people being lynched, that wouldn't be considered a ceasefire. That would be considered violence. Coming from the background that I come from, with people being bombed, people being shot, people being treated less than all the time, continually, and even presently, that is an act of violence. And to say ceasefire seems to actually be small compared to everything that everyone over in that area, in that part of the world, has had to endure. And I prefer that language. I think it's actually more definitive as to what the population over there is having to endure, period. So, James, I will support that. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on this amendment. To be reminded, it says, "Starting with an immediate and permanent cessation of violence by both Israel and Hamas." Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Hersi?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Coisenberry?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going back to the main resolution with the amendment. Is there any discussion on that?
I assume it's okay to criticize the Israeli government and the policies of its politicians. And to do so does not mean you hate Jewish people. It is my opinion that Israelis taking to the streets in early 2023 to protest their government's attempt to control its judiciary system was not an expression of hatred for Jews. Just as my criticism of the Bush administration's fabrication of Iraq possessing weapons of mass destruction as an excuse to kill Iraqis is not an expression of hatred for Americans. Perhaps it seems beyond the city of Urbana's jurisdiction to declare Urbana to be a nuclear-free zone, resolving Urbana to be in opposition to the invasion of Iraq, or defining Urbana to be a sanctuary city. But all were done by the Urbana City Council as an expression of the residents' wishes. Contentiousness is not the sole criteria whether an issue gets debated in the city of Urbana. Urbana is willing to take on the tough stuff if it's a concern to the citizens. License plate readers, a new homeless shelter on Springfield Avenue, allowing landlords to discriminate against source of income, changing the policies governing use of force by police, the hiring of 15 additional police officers, and the raising of taxes to pay for it, or Hope Village shows Urbana is a place where difficult conversations are allowed. Discussing a ceasefire is not intended to divide us or cast dislike at a particular group of people. It was my intention to bring about some peace. These thousands of years of constant stereotyping, bigotry, and the dehumanization of each other, followed by the endless back-and-forth cycle of retaliation, revenge, and retribution in the name of self-defense, sadly, and probably won't end anytime soon. It may be a fruitless Pollyanna gesture, but I am for a ceasefire anyway, everywhere. Whether in Gaza, in Israel, in Ukraine, in Syria, in the Sudan, in South Chicago, in champagne Urbana the next time someone is thinking of doing something with a gun, or bashing their partner upside the head. I am against all violence, as I suspect most of us are. All we are saying is give peace a chance. Maybe somebody ought to write a song about that. It might be more effective than a municipal resolution. Thanks for letting me speak.
Okay, we're going to vote on the main motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. The resolution will go on to City Council for approval. Last item on the agenda is council input and communications. Anyone? Mayor Marley?
Just wanted to remind folks that next week's council meeting is going to be rescheduled to March 18th. We don't have a quorum for the meeting next week. So on March 18th, and as well as the town board meeting. So there will be town board meeting on March 18th, the rescheduled city council meeting, the rescheduled town board, the rescheduled council meeting, as well as the regular committee of the whole meeting, all on March 18th.
Apologies, as a point of clarification, the 18th will be a special town board meeting for the sole purpose of approving, sorry, the annual town board meeting agenda. And then the rescheduled township board meeting will be the following Monday on March 25th.
My apologies.
But the city council, yeah, but city council will be on March 18th.
No meeting next week.
Correct.
Any other council input? Sherice?
Before we go, and Chris, I appreciate what you were saying in your comment. Oh, I just want to share a story from how long I've been seeing this particular conflict. And I'd say it was like since I was back in third grade. And I didn't understand it then, no child would. Because I was always the one trying to make the two sides get together. I didn't understand that Waznan and Adnan didn't like each other because of their religious backgrounds. I didn't understand that. I didn't understand that, you know, no matter what I tried to do on the playground and make them friends, they weren't going to be friends. And it all starts with a conversation, and maybe somebody more objective than myself or anyone else that can mediate that and facilitate that. But that's how hurtful this has been, at least for me, considering I've been doing, I've been seeing this since I was a little girl. And it brings to mind a song. I have a singing background, so I think of lyrics a lot. Songs have been written about it, believe it or not. But there is a song that maybe many of you haven't heard. And it's called "You Have to Be Carefully Taught." And that song resonates with me because I'm a black woman, first of all. But also the lyrics of it. And I would invite everyone to look up those lyrics. It's a Rodgers and Hammerstein movie or musical from South Pacific. And the lyrics are extremely poignant. And what I noticed during this time, watching everybody's hurt come to the floor and speak about it in public, is that something's got to give. And maybe you can't do it, and maybe I can't do it. But your governments can. And you have to speak to them, not just American government, but Palestinian governments, also Israeli government, definitely. And I would like, I would hope to see a lasting peace. That is my hope for that area, and it has been since I was in third grade. But that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I do want to mention that I was able to go to the Read Across America event on Saturday. It was fantastic, seeing kids all over the place enjoying literacy, seeing adults, including our own Chief Boone, reading stories to them. I was doing that with our Urbana Rotary Club. But it is, it's good to see a lot of people in Lincoln Square, and a lot of our kids benefiting from the efforts of the library and the other groups that put that together. So it was a good Saturday.
Okay, with no further business in front of the City Council, we're adjourned.